Everybody and welcome to the first planning development control meeting of 2021. It's Thursday, the 21st of January and the time is 9:30. Before I go any further, I'm going to ask Dave Shaw, our senior democratic services officer, to do a roll call of members and tell us which officers are present today. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you Chair. First of all councillor Clea.
Yes, present. Good morning.
Good morning. Councillor Evans?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you again councillor Laming?
Good morning, thank you. I'm here.
Thank you councillor McLean?
Yes, good morning, present.
Yes, good morning councillor Reed?
Present.
Thank you councillor Raffel?
Present.
And councillor Rutter?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. That's all members are present and you asked me to tell you which officers were present today. So I will proceed. Julie Pinnock, Service Lead Built Environment. Fiona Sutherland, the Public Law Manager. And the planning case officers for item seven Woodpeckers is Megan Osborne. And Megan is joined by Richard Wadman, Service Lead for Estates. For item eight Holly Tree Cottage is Cameron Taylor. And for item nine The Garden House Catherine Watson. I'm David Shaw from Democratic Services and I'm joined this morning by David Blatmore and Matthew Watson also from Democratic Services. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Dave.
Councillor Gordon Smith, your microphone is still on.
Yes, there are still people with not their microphones muted, which is just the point I'm coming to in fact. Members and members of the public, please could you turn your microphones off and your cameras unless you're speaking? And members, could you refer to the page and paragraph if you are referring to the report? I tend to leave my video on sometimes depending on how long the next gap is. Members too, if you have any IT problems, could you let officers know as it may affect your right to vote? We are having a slightly different setup today. And so Dave Shaw is operating in a different place and it hasn't been possible to put the clock on the screen. So members of the public, you will be told when your three members are up. Or if you are a ward councillor, five minutes, but it won't actually be on the screen. We're sorry about that. It's an unusual occurrence. Please could I also remind everybody to turn off their mobile phones or to put them on silence? And members of the public, after you've finished speaking, don't go away. Because there could be questions from members of the committee for you. I think that I also need to advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. And in addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube shortly after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting's details and where the recording will remain thereafter. So we will move to the agenda. The first item is apologies and deputy members. Dave, I don't believe that we have any.
Yes, yes, thank you Chair. As I, as we did the roll call, all members are present. So there's no deputies or apologies given for today's meeting. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Disclosure of interest?
Yes Chair, I'd like to say something about item 13. Item 13 is a fellow ward councillor. So I think I'd back out of that voting on that item.
Okay councillor Raffel, thank you. And I declare a personal but not prejudicial interest because the item, the first item in the afternoon is also in my ward, but I haven't had anything to do with it. And at the time I was a member of the parish council who had objected to the application. But again, I had no part to play in that objection. Councillor Clea, you've got the same?
Yes, yeah, thank you Chair. And the same goes for me. As councillor Evans said, it is in my ward, but I do not, I've not had any knowledge until now of the planning application. So I feel that I'm, it's personal but not prejudicial. Thank you.
And that's agenda item 11 councillor Reed?
Chair, we have, sorry. Councillor Reed, yes.
Councillor Reed, have you got your hand up?
Well, I'm not terribly sure. It's not registering as, oh, it is there. Stranger. Anyway, yes Chairman, just some guidance with regard to item 13 then because the member is known. Could we have a legal ruling on that one please?
I think it's here because it's a councillor.
Hello Chair, I think in relation to councillor Reed's question and in fact councillor Raffel's declaration, the issue about making a declaration involving a fellow councillor, it's not just simply that you are fellow councillors, it's that you are well acquainted. So if you're perhaps friends outside of the meeting, that could mean that you have to declare an interest, whether or not it's a prejudicial interest, as in the case of councillor Raffel. That's something obviously councillor Reed will have to take a view on depending on his links with councillor Lumby. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chairman. In that case, I don't consider that I'm that close. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, the reason why I asked for it to be excused from that is because councillor Lumby and I have had dinners together and all sorts of things which make me that.
Right. So you're declaring a prejudicial interest and councillor Reed is just declaring a personal but not prejudicial interest in item 13. I think I've got that right. And councillor Laming, I see you've got your hand up?
Yeah, it's just on the ward councillor for the garden house one, but I've had nothing to do with that at all.
No, thank you very much. So I think now we can move on to item three on the agenda. Membership of subcommittees, but I don't believe that we have any Dave.
That is correct. Nothing to report on this item Chair.
And then we move on to the minutes. The minutes are on page nine onwards in our report. If you are agreeing that these can be accepted as a true record of our last meeting on the 2nd of December, I wonder if you can unmute your microphones and.
Agreed.
Agreed. Agreed.
Anyone not agreeing?
Agreed.
I think that's agreed then. Then item five, to accept the update sheet as an addendum to the report.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you very much. That's agreed. And now we move on to the business items. The first planning application is item seven, which is one to four Woodpeckers Drive in Winchester. Case number 20/01554/FUL. The case officer is Megan Osborne. And when you're ready Megan, please give us your presentation.
Thank you Chair. The site consists of four large detached dwellings within a cul-de-sac of Woodpeckers Drive to the east of Stockbridge Road. There are two other dwellings within the cul-de-sac, number five on the side here, and number six which has planning permission for four dwellings. Meadowlands to the north of the site is accessed of a separate access from Stockbridge Road. This has planning permission which was permitted in 2018 for 11 dwellings. To the south, there is a care home known as Sunrise and to the east of the site, there are dwellings on Dean Close. The proposal is to demolish the existing four dwellings on the site and associated buildings and replace with 19 units of accommodation. This is a mix of apartments and semi-detached dwellings. The proposal has been altered over time. These are the two comparisons. So on the right hand side of your screen is the one that's under consideration now. And the one on the left hand side of your screen is the one that's been amended. The main change being the loss of the two dwellings to the front of the site, units 20 and 21. This gives a more spacious feel within the site, especially when first entering. Further landscaping has also been proposed with some changes to the amount of hard standing and changes to the internal road layout. This is the elevation of plots one to 12. The apartment blocks along Stockbridge Road. All right, next slide, this one. This is the Stockbridge Road elevation. They are larger blocks showing on this elevation. However, they're broken up by different projections and are 2.5 storeys high, which is relative to surrounding buildings within the area. The closed boarded fence which existingly runs along Stockbridge Road is being replaced by a state railing, which is added as a request from the landscape officer to give a more spacious open field to the surrounding area. The apartment blocks are split into two main blocks which are linked with a basement for the parking. It's shown at the bottom of the screen. The apartments are made up of eight two-bedroom flats and two three-bedroom flats, giving a mix of two and three bedroom dwellings on the site. This is plots 13 and 14 with 15 and 16 and they are semi-detached dwellings and they mirror each other. These four dwellings located in front of the site are split into three levels. And they are all four-bedroom dwellings. This is plot 17, 18 and 19 which are located to the rear of the site. Plot 17 has a large side rear garden and plots 18 and 19 are mirrored. These are all four bedroom dwellings. This shows the application in comparison with existing four dwellings that are on the site. To the right hand side of your screen is the four dwellings existing on the site and the proposal on the left hand side of your screen. This shows the development at Meadowlands that was permitted in 2018 for 11 dwellings. The site one to four is just to the left here. This is the development that was permitted recently at number six Woodpeckers for four dwellings. And it's showing some photos of the site. The first one, top right hand of the screen is looking out towards Stockbridge Road, top left hand side, sorry. Top right is looking in towards the site with Meadowlands on your right. And number three is, has got number one, I think that is, on your left hand side. Number 31 is showing some of the existing houses that are on the site number one to four and this is showing all of them. I'll take you to other photos that show you a bit more. This is an aerial photo of the site. So number one to four are located here. Number five and number six, and that, they're the dwellings on the cul-de-sac. This shows the development at Meadowlands currently being constructed. It's near completion. And then to the south, this is Sunrise, the big care home. And then to the east, this is Dean Close with some new dwellings that have been permitted on the rear of the Close here. These are the dwellings on Burnett Close, I think it's called, opposite the site on a road that runs parallel to Stockbridge Road. They are generally two-storey detached dwellings. This is further down Stockbridge Road. It's a development called Cecil Down. And they are three-storey larger blocks. And this is Sunrise, the care home which is to the south of the site. This is looking at the site. So straight ahead is number one Woodpeckers Drive. And this is the closed boarded fence that is going to be replaced by a state railing. And these trees here, shown in the foreground, are TPO'd. This is looking at the development at Meadowlands. As you can see, it's near completion. And then going into Woodpeckers Drive on your left. And this is further down Stockbridge Road with the site on your left with that closed boarded fence showing there again. And this is within the site, standing at number two Woodpeckers Drive, looking towards Sunrise to the south, showing, showing the trees along that boundary. This is just an artist impression of the proposed units. The apartment blocks are off the screen. These are the other semi-detached properties and the detached ones to the back of the site here. The application is for 19 dwellings and it's considered to be acceptable in relation to all relevant planning policy. The developer has worked with the council and as a result has a well-designed scheme that fits with the character of the surrounding area, both in design and scale. It's therefore recommended that this proposal is approved subject to conditions as set out in my report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Megan. We now come to the public speaking. Now on my list here, we have Elizabeth and Roger King and Mr Russell Blackman who are objectors. And I think they are all here today. I think I've seen them. So Mr and Mrs King and Mr Blackman, you have three minutes in total and it's up to you entirely how you split that. You've heard, I can't put the clock on the screen today, but so we will tell you when your three minutes are up. When you're ready and you've obviously sorted out who's going first.
Yes, thank you very much Chair. Yes, I'm going to go first and then hand over to Russell. So my name is Elizabeth King and I'm here with my husband Roger King of Five Woodpeckers Drive. And we wish to raise three points. The first is the detrimental impact on the currently rich ecology. On top of the developments of Meadowlands and Six Woodpeckers Drive as well as Salters Acres, the plan's shown significant removal of current trees and mature vegetation, which will be devastating to flora and fauna in this area. Our second point relates to increased traffic from the development. Firstly, we would request the committee to question the highways report which shows 66 daily traffic movements from the development versus 24 from existing houses, which is an increase of nearly three times. However, there are nearly five times the number of houses being built. So surely one would expect five times the number of traffic movements, i.e. 114 and not 66. It is also difficult to exit the drive onto Stockbridge Road due to poor visibility and the 40 mile an hour speed limit at this point. This, these increased traffic movements will result in significant delays to residents leading the, leaving the drive as well as adding to the peak hour congestion on Scott Stockbridge Road. There will also be a significant increase in the number of pedestrians, including schoolchildren wanting to cross Stockbridge Road to join the existing footpath on its north side. Crossing this busy road presents a serious hazard for pedestrians and will be evident from the council's own accidents and maintenance records. And the committee is requesting, requested to take action to ensure a safe crossing at this point. Our third point relates to drainage. We note that no drainage strategy has been submitted and we wish to point out to the committee that the documents that the developer was relying on for the previous care home application on this site were materially incorrect in terms of both existing foul and surface water sewers. For example, the drawing did not show that the Salters Lane or Holly Meadows development of a few years ago of 100 plus properties also connects into the foul sewer that is shown to start within the grounds of Six Woodpeckers Drive. A sewer that was originally designed to serve just six houses and other details are in our objection. Additionally, the development will increase paved area and because of the sloping nature of the site, this will increase the risk of rainwater flowing downhill into both our house and plots 17, 18 and 19. Thus the council must request that the developer undertakes a thorough condition survey of the existing foul and surface water sewers and then the output of which is then taken into account in the design. I'll now hand over to Russell.
Thanks Liz. So I'm Russell Blackman and we live in Limeview Dean Close. And our plot directly sits adjacent to plot 19 and 18. And as a family of four with two young children, we're extremely concerned about the overlooking from the proposed plots of 18 and 19.
Three minutes Chair.
I'm very sorry that there is your three minutes. I think probably Mrs King took a little bit longer than she expected to. But there will be questions to you, possibly. Members, any questions for Mr and Mrs King or Mr Blackman? Perhaps I could start and you were saying, Mr Blackman, that you were concerned about overlooking, overlooking into your garden?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yeah, so basically the proposed plan of certainly plot number 19 would look directly into our living room. And so we feel that there's going to be a significant loss of privacy and that is a kind of a major concern for us. So I think we feel that that could be mitigated through the use of kind of roof windows in the third floor and also the removal of the French doors on the second floor. So I think that's, that's our kind of real main concern really. And you know additionally, as it said, we're concerned about the loss of green space for wildlife to flourish because it's in abundance currently here. And also we have an issue around the general overdevelopment of the site. But for us, it's very much around sort of the overlooking directly into our main living spaces with our young children.
Thank you, thank you. Members, any more questions?
We have councillor Reed with a question Chair.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chairman. Just, just trying to get my head around exactly where you reside, Mr Russell. Is that opposite what's going to be plot number 19?
Yeah, it's, on the plan that was just shown at the beginning, it's, we're down as 5A in Dean Close. The address is actually Limeview Dean Close, but it's on your plan, it's down as kind of 5A. So it's just adjacent to that. And so the current proposed site plan for number 19 is actually quite a, quite a bit further closer towards our boundary than the current footprint of the number four Woodpeckers.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions?
No further questions Chair, thank you.
So thank you very much Mr and Mrs King and Mr Blackman for coming along today. And I'm sure the committee will take up your points.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you could turn your camera off and your microphones. Thank you very much. So we move then on to the report. Megan, is there anything you wished to add before we go into members' questions?
Chair, are we going to have the ward councillor and the supporter?
Of course we are and silly me. Yes. Deep apologies councillor Weir. So it's now your turn, ward councillor councillor and Weir. And when you're ready, I think we have your slides ready on the screen for you and you have five minutes.
Thank you Madam Chairman for the opportunity to speak this morning. My first slide shows one to four Woodpeckers in the bottom right of this map. I'm not seeing the slide. In relation to three other contiguous developments which have been permitted over the last two and a half to three years. The area inside the dotted line comprising Meadowlands, gardens at two to four Salters Acres now known as the Close at Meadowlands, six Woodpeckers and now one to four Woodpeckers is a combined 1.8 hectares. 19 dwellings were permitted by delegated decision and some re-permitted over 2019-20. This application for a further 19 dwellings would bring the total to 38 dwellings at an overall density of 21 per hectare. During the course of 2019, applications on all four sites were live simultaneously. Comments were received from the urban designer, design panel and the City of Winchester Trust to the effect that these sites should be considered as one development. Policy DM14 calls for contiguous sites to be covered by a master plan that ensures the wider implications and potential cumulative benefits can be addressed. It's a shame therefore, this policy has not been applied on these sites. It could have produced a much better outcome from the perspective of high quality design and environmental landscaping, energy efficiency and low carbon infrastructure and cumulative implications for traffic and highways planning. But I assume that horse has bolted. Can I have slide two please? I'm going to focus on the appropriate affordable home contribution for this application. Policy CP3 requires 40% affordable housing or an off-site contribution on developments of more than 10 dwellings or over 1,000 square metres GIA. On this initial site at Meadowlands of 11 houses, an S106 agreement for 273,000 was included in the commission in 2018. A revised application in 2019 overlapped with an application for four more houses of GIA 800 metres squared in contiguous gardens on Salters Acres now called the Close. I assume the S106 still stands, but had the two applications been submitted as one, this would have increased the affordable housing liability. Since that time, the combined 15 houses on Meadowlands, the Close, have been marketed at values between 5,500 and 6,400 a square metre. As I understand it, that's anything as much as 10 to 20% more per square metre than the values estimated in the viability reports submitted in 2018. Has this market uplift which continues to this day in Winchester, where houses are now selling in two thirds of the time pre-COVID, been reflected in the viability assessment on the current application? We just don't know. Can I have slide three please? The situation today is we have three permitted developments and the application before us, all on contiguous sites, all brought forward by the same developer concurrently. Apart from the Close, three of the sites are or have been until released by the developer, covered by covenants inherently linking the whole area. Looking at the development as a whole, we have Meadowlands with 2,000 square metres, the Close with 800, six Woodpeckers with approximately 800 and now Woodpeckers, 19 dwellings, over 4,000 square metres internal area with affordable housing only covering some 2,000 of the total 7,000 to 8,000 internal area. Madam Chairman, I believe this committee should have had much more evidence that the affordable housing viability assessment on this application had been rigorously tested against actual market conditions and that the cumulative benefits to the developer of the whole site have been considered. I see no other option in the meantime than to ask you to refuse this application on the grounds of failure to meet CP3. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Weir. Members, any questions for councillor Weir? Could I ask you councillor Weir, were all these three sites that you've got on the screen now, were they all part of the original house which has been pulled down or?
Well, since the original house that was pulled down was first built in the 1930s, these four sites, the three sites apart from, well even the Salters Acres was linked at one point, but the other three sites have all been linked. They were all part of the original land area and they've all been covered, as I understand it, by interlinked covenants over that period.
Right, thank you.
We have councillor Laming with a question Chair.
Councillor Laming?
In your opinion and from people that you've been speaking to, do you think this changes the whole character of the area?
Oh, it most, well it dramatically changes the character of the area, yes. I mean, we've got some very large imposing buildings already on Meadowlands and the Close at Meadowlands. And it transforms the entrance to Winchester.
Yes, because originally that was one big open area with a 1920s style house built. Yes, because originally that was one big open area with a 1920 style house built on it, wasn't it? Before Woodpecker Drive was built.
Clearly there's been development in this area over a long period. And as, as the officer referred to, there are houses on Godwin Close and Burnett but have a more suburban feel and are more modest in their stature.
Thank you councillor Leaming. Vice Chair, any further questions for councillor Andweir?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Andweir for coming along today. And we move now.
Chair, I, I think there was a question from councillor McLean.
Right, well, has he indicated that to the?
Oh, yes, Chair, it's just, it's just come up, I'm sorry, apologies councillor McLean, you've just arrived, thank you.
Well spotted, the councillor McLean.
A question if I may, again councillor Andweir, it was, it was nice to hear a passionate speech on the subject, but my question is about affordable housing and you, you put quite a lot of weight on that. Can you expand further on what properties are, we're being told one thing, but what are the properties likely to be selling for? Is this, is there a huge difference that the developers putting forward? I didn't phrase that very well, but I think you get the gist of what I'm after.
Yes, thank you councillor McLean. The difficulty we have obviously is we, we can't see the viability assessment on this, although I am aware of figures that went into the viability assessment on, on Meadowlands. And there does seem to have been quite considerable discrepancy, both between what was put into the original viability assessment on Meadowlands and obviously what was agreed for the S106 on, on that site. And so I'm just, I'm considering the, the values that the Meadowlands are now being marketed at, which is significantly higher than went into the S1, the original viability assessment. I, I'm just calling into question the claim that it's not possible on these 19 very high quality upmarket, proposed developments here on one to six, one to four Woodpeckers, that it's not viable to make an affordable housing contribution.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you councillor McLean. Are there any further questions for councillor Andweir? Vice Chair.
There are no further questions indicated, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So we come to the final public speaker, which is the applicant, Chris Rees. Good morning, Mr Rees.
Good morning, Chair.
And you have three minutes when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. In forming the plan application, we had the opportunity to consider the residential scheme in light of the comments that were lodged against the previous care home application. This allowed an insight into how the residential scheme could be formed and where changes could be made to respond to the comments that had been received. By way of example, we relocated the basement car park in this entrance to improve the relationship with neighbours, as well as reducing the mass of the buildings that had been proposed. The design and layout is founded on providing a positive and attractive frontage to Stoppage Road. You've already seen the images of the close board fence that currently exists. So when we, councillor Andweir talks about making a change to the, to the area, we see it as a positive change in locating the apartments behind the tree belt that exists. Initially, the scheme was formed of 21 properties. We've listened to the, to the views of the officers and we've reduced this down to 19 and increased the, the landscape in that exists. There is a broad mix of housing proposed. We've got the smaller two bedroom properties which are less than 1,000 square feet that goes through to the larger four bedroom houses with a mixture of apartments and houses proposed. In terms of location, we've got a great site here in terms of opportunities for walk into the shops and services within Wey and bus connections to the city centre. We'll also be fitting each house with a dedicated electric charging point for cars, as well as providing charging points within the basement car park to promote the use of sustainable forms of transport. To, to turn to some of the points raised by the, by the objectors, Mr Russell first. Mr Russell's property is a new build property, it was a backland development to the rear of Woodpecker's Drive, so bringing the, the housing closer to the existing houses within, within Woodpeckers. We've looked very closely at the relationship between the two with, with the officers and we don't conclude any problems in respect of overlooking. In, in terms of ecology, we've, we obviously do the various studies, we've got a suite of studies done on this site. And we've had recommendations in terms of how we mitigate the loss of green space through the, the planting of new green spades and bath boxes, which we've already implemented. Highways and drainage, we're governed by the, by those that, that judge our application. We put forward the proposals either via condition or during determination. It's judged whether there's capacity and the safeguards are put in place by way of, by way of condition. Just briefly on the amalgamation of these, of these parks or land, that, see Meadowlands was approved two and a half years ago. There, there were some applications to tweak the scheme thereafter, but during, during construction. But there's people living in Meadowlands now, so there was never an opportunity for Woodpecker's Drive and Meadowlands to come forward at exactly the same time. So it's, it's not true that they're all sat there waiting to go at the same time. Perhaps we can discuss more about that. But Chair, in, in summary, the proposal's been fully considered against those.
Three minutes, Chair.
Respectfully asked that you would approve the application, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Rees. Could I start the questions? These are, the councillor Andweir mentioned three sites and we saw on the screen three sites. And was there a master plan for these three sites?
No, if that could be brought back onto the screen, maybe I could describe it for you. You talked about the 19.
That we can do that, but we'll.
Okay, so the, the original, the very original interest on this concerned Meadowlands, which was the, the house that we've referred to, we know well, which was sat in the centre of a large plot within the, and so historically the houses within Woodpecker's Drive were built within those grounds. So our very initial interest in this, I'm going back four years now, was with Meadowlands. And we secured the planning permission for that in July 2018. And we're moving forward with that in isolation, having, having, having secured that permission. Somewhat unusually, we had five out of six residents within Woodpecker's Drive come and knock our door and say that we would like to consider a development around our side as well. Number five didn't want to take part, but there was a covenant held by number five over development of number one to four. So that, that, if number five had been part of the scheme, it would have opened up one to six Woodpeckers. But of course, it's their prerogative not to be part of it. So that left us then with a number six in isolation to the north of Meadowlands. Again, separately, having been approved, the Meadowland scheme, the residents of Salters Acres wanted to take part and they came to us seeking a plan permission for four houses on their rear gardens. So this is morphed really into a number of applications over a period of time. The circumstances dictated that we were never able to do a single master plan for this. We couldn't, we couldn't hold a site for two and a half, three years while other applications caught up. And that's the, that's the, the brief history, Chair.
And thank you. Yeah, I understand it's a very complicated site. And then you talked in, in your presentation about that there are affordable houses, that, you know, there are flats which are only one and two bedroom, but they're not with an affordable housing provider, are they?
No, not at all. Again, if I can give you a little bit of history on this, see councillor Andweir has pointed out, the Meadowland scheme where you're purchasing one property was able to deliver a, you know, more than a quarter of a million pound for the, for the city council to go and deliver its affordable housing programme. That was delivered, that was, that was one house. On this occasion, we're, we're purchasing four houses to deliver the 19 within one to four Woodpecker's Drive. Your policies are such that even within just open market housing, there needs to be an array and mix of houses. And by providing apartments, some, they are, they are open market, so, but with a lower case A in terms of affordable, so they have the lower price point for open market properties than they go through to the higher value properties, which is the four bed. So there's a big range within this site, it's not just large four bedroom houses at all. So we've, we've looked at that very carefully, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any further questions from members of the committee?
Yes, Chair, we have three members wishing to ask questions. We have councillor Leaming, councillor McLean and councillor Clear, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Leaming, first of all.
Thank you. I noticed that you say that you're going to be putting in charging points for cars, but since the council has a policy of zero carbon coming into place and we've been working on reducing the carbon footprint of places for the last two years. How are you addressing that in this particular development? Because I cannot see any plausible increase in insulation and different types of heating systems where you could have used the opportunity to have done that considerably. So I'd like your comment on that before we, I'd like to ask another question after that, if I may, Chair.
Yeah, so there's two parts there, and so yes, we are putting the charging points in because we think it's important for, to future proof the scheme. There's, there's obviously a condition within the permission that we have to adhere to in terms of improving the sustainability and the efficiency of these buildings, which has moved on significantly in recent years. So we will be employing solar panels within the site and looking very closely at the, the installation to meet those requirements that you've set us within that condition. The last point is, is somewhat to do with the construction. As a business, we're always looking at how we improve our sourcing of materials and the sustainability of that. As, as one example or two examples, we've recently windows, a lot of windows are manufactured in Poland and imported into the country and you can imagine the carbon footprint on that as they travel across Europe. So we've, we've recently started using a manufacturer in Somerset, which will reduce that footprint quite significantly. And our, and our solar panels are made in Hampshire, for example. So we're, we're continually looking to see how we improve it. Ultimately, we, we're geared by or governed by your condition as well to make sure we, we improve this as, as the, as the technology improves as well.
Thank you. But we still need to improve on that, looking at the heating systems and that. If you're proposing to use gas, how are you proposing to get around the problems of that in the future? Because that will be phased out as such. But I also want to know a little bit more about the underground parking because we tried, you tried to put that into a site on Southdown on Crossways, but you then took that out at a later stage because of the cost. So I want to be assured that that will remain in this particular plan.
Yeah, that, that, the Crossway site was just three houses from my, from my recollection of it. And we were looking to see how we might incorporate it. Very differently in terms of, I think from my, my recollection, there's 23 parking spaces within the basement, so there's an economy of scale to, to construct that basement. We've done a scheme recently, you know, at Ashburton Place, where we have the apartment blocks at the front with the basement underneath. And it has a huge effect in terms of taking those cars off the street scene. And so it's, the, the whole structure of those apartments, councillor, has been formed with that, with that basement to come forward. So it's an integral part of the scheme.
And councillor Leaming, any change would require a further planning application, I believe.
Yes, but we've seen that quite a lot from this particular developer, we get members coming through as the time goes on.
Yeah, I understand your concern. So have, you finished your questions councillor Leaming?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, so councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Rees, thank you for your presentation. High end properties, yes, granted, which brings me to my question on affordable housing. I am shocked that you feel this development will not make you enough, I'm going to our page 24 of the report, I think it is, that you are unable to make a contribution of any significance. I wonder if you could just expand on that to allow me to consider your application, thank you.
Of course, I, I'll use Meadowlands as a good example. We, we were on that occasion, we.
Can I stop you? Can I ask you not to talk about another development? There's a lot of talk about other developments, can we just talk about this one?
Yeah, of course. One to four Woodpeckers, we're, we're purchasing four very expensive properties as the starting point. When you, when you purchase a property for development, as you know, there's also an applet on that. There's a premium to be paid to the landowner, which is accepted by the RICS for how you value the existing use value. So before we even put a spade in the ground on this site, to, to actually allow the development to proceed, we have to part with millions of pounds to, to buy these four properties. So we did look with the case officer, with, with Mrs Osborne. Very early on, we looked at whether we could get enough square footage back onto this site to allow for affordable housing to be integrated within it. And it became very, very apparent very quickly that that wasn't going to be supported from an urban design perspective. To, to get enough square footage back to offset the existing use value wouldn't have achieved a planning permission. So then we, we get to the point where with the planning officers that they are in theory happy with, with the urban design and the scale and the massing. We talked about scale and massing of these houses as well. And there's a viability report that's prepared, that, that's put forward by a surveyor, to, to your surveyor. So it's an independent process that goes forward and, and it's judged accordingly. And I, I think Mr Blackman's on the, on the line today and I'm sure he might be able to expand further on that. But it's a, it's a very transparent process of how we, we go through it.
Okay, councillor McLean.
Yes, that doesn't clarify it for me at all, thank you.
Councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Mr Rees, welcome. I'm all about viability and I'm, I'm looking at affordable housing as well. I gather, but you've just said that the viability assessment submitted was submitted to accompany the planning application. If so, may I ask you, Mr Rees, has anything changed since you put in the viability?
Yes.
If so, what's the evidence, read the change?
The, the change is we've lost two houses. So the position's been worsened by the, the planning process in terms of the return for, for us, the developer. So that's the only material change that's, that's been made between lodging the application with the viability and the position we find ourselves in today.
Okay, councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair.
Um councillor Rees, I'm not councillor, sorry, Mr Rees, could I ask you to explain just briefly the covenant? Because that is one of the reasons that has been given by Alfred Homes that they can't have, that has added to the cost. So could you explain that to me?
Yeah, so as I said at the start of the, the discussion, the Woodpecker's Drive houses were built in the, effectively the grounds of Meadowlands. The owner of the property at that point in time during the construction, there was two covenants placed on, or two, two properties owned covenants on the development of one to four. One of them is number six Woodpecker's Drive and one of them is number five Woodpecker's Drive. And so to deliver number one to four Woodpecker's Drive for development, we have to release those covenants. Now, number six Woodpecker's Drive had an agreement with us to develop number six, so that resolved that covenant issue. But for number five, we've had to come to a financial settlement with number five to release their covenant over one to four. So they have, I'm not going to mention the, the figure in, in this forum, but it's a, it's a substantial figure, over six figures to release the covenant and the development can proceed on one to four. So there's, there's that cost as well, which has gone into the viability, Chair.
So I'm, I'm sorry to labour this point, but it is an important point in that presumably prices have risen. We heard, I think from councillor Andweir, that how much houses were selling for in, in the neighbouring area. So would the covenant have increased in price? Or I'm not asking you to reveal the details, but.
As time goes on, the land value would have increased because obviously the people owning the houses would have wanted more for their value of, of their, of their existing properties. It wouldn't have affected the covenant necessarily in terms of that time today. That was a negotiation that was held between the owners of number five, who spoke in today, and Alfred Homes in terms of looking to bring forward the development on one to four. It, it, it goes, it goes back to your point, the point councillor Andweir made about house prices, of course, when you commit to something, you, you estimate the, the value of those properties. What we don't do if the market goes down is then come back and knock the door and say, can we have some money back, please? Because the market's fallen. So you, you, you ride a wave of markets going up and down. And sometimes you, you lose out financially, sometimes it seems the same and sometimes you might improve in it. It's, it's a, it's a little bit of a lottery.
I, I think what you're hearing from the committee, but we'll hear later from them, no doubt. no doubt, is their disappointment over the provision of affordable housing. Even though you say you have smaller sizes, that doesn't necessarily mean that the four people normally have affordable housing.
Can I make one final point, Chair? I discussed this issue on this particular site with councillor Crask no more than four months ago, because we were looking at it very closely at that time. And I prepared a paper for him on how we collectively, council, Alfred Homes, councillors, the community might deliver more affordable housing within the city and on these fringes of villages, more than happy to share that paper. And it all comes down to existing use value. There are sites that can deliver affordable housing, and there's some sites that can't deliver affordable housing. I'm more than happy to share that paper and show how we've looked at that very closely and how we might be able to contribute.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, any further questions for Mr. Rees?
Just one from myself, I believe, Chair, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Rees.
Good morning.
I just wanted to ask, have you ever known house prices in Winchester in the last 20 years to go down? And the second point is, I forgot what my second point was. That'll do, thank you.
Okay. Based on the last 12 months has been a very difficult year, but for very recent history, we've had houses that, the majority of the houses that we've sold in the last 12 months have been below expectation in terms of prices, or where we projected we would have been 18 months, two years ago. So yeah, it is market-driven, and any uncertainty in the market does have an effect on house prices. Winchester is more robust, councillor Rutter, than a lot of other places. But it's not completely devoid of any kind of up and down market adjustment because of changes.
Thank you. No more questions, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So now we, thank you very much, Mr. Rees, for coming along. And obviously you will be wanting to stay in the meeting. If you could just turn your video off, thank you very much. Right, so Megan, anything you wish to update us on from what you've heard?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, so we move to our report and to members' questions. And so if we look at, as a first instance, the principle of development, any questions there? I gather not, Vice Chair?
No questions, Chair.
So move on to design layout impact on the character of the area.
Could I ask a question about overlooking? Is that appropriate here? So we heard from number five A, one of the neighbouring closes, that they were concerned about overlooking from one of the new houses. Could Mrs. Osborne perhaps explain why we don't consider that this is going to be a problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I've looked closely at this, and it's plot 19 that he's referring to, and he considers it to be overlooking to his dwelling, which is labelled as plot five A, Dean Close. We're trying to get a view of that.
That's Mr. Blackman, Mrs. King, I haven't got down that she was concerned about that.
Yeah. Go back to the first one. There, that one. So this shows the existing situation. So you've got plot one to floor four here, and then you've got number five here. So number 19 is moving slightly closer to that boundary, and it has windows on this elevation. But I considered these, and I looked at the overlooking, and I considered the distances and the oblique angle of the windows dwelling to dwelling, that there would not be any material harm in terms of overlooking from this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, could I just ask about distances and also landscaping? So are we asking for landscaping? There is going to be significant, it doesn't look like there's a huge amount of landscaping from at number 19, just an existing tree presumably. Are we asking for more landscaping? Thank you.
If you go to the last plan, there's the landscaping plan. The very last one. So this is the proposed landscaping scheme. There is a big tree on the corner of that plot there that will screen views. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Blackman also mentioned French windows at the first floor and concern over overlooking.
There are French windows on the ground floor, as you can see in this plot here, but the first floor has windows to the bedroom.
And do you consider there will be overlooking from those French windows?
No, they're ground floor windows. They'll be looking directly into the back garden of that plot, number 19, and towards any rear boundary landscaping. And I don't believe there'll be any overlooking towards number five A.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, is that it for that section?
We have councillor Reed with a question, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, it's very much in the same vein, looking at the plans and the location of five A, Dean Close. Megan, what is the distance from the property to property at that point? Megan?
Yes, sorry, I'm here. I don't unfortunately have the information of exact measurements from plot to plot at this present time.
Do we know the depth of number 19?
The rear garden?
Yes.
No, I don't know the exact measurements, as you said, as I said, but if we go to the plan, you can see there is a significant distance in the rear garden area towards the boundary of that site. And then you've got number five beyond, which is up here.
That's correct. Right, thank you.
So there being no more questions, I take it, we'll move on to the impact, which starts on page 21, goes on to page 22.
There are questions, Chair.
Impact on neighbouring amenities.
I believe councillor McLean has a question on viability, which I don't think we've got to yet, Chair.
Okay, councillor McLean?
Okay, I'll wait until we get there.
So no more questions on the impact on the neighbours' amenities?
No more questions, Chair, on that issue.
So we'll then look at the rest of the report, which starts with landscape and trees on page 22 and goes on. We won't, we'll talk about affordable housing, I think, as a separate issue. So we're finished with archaeology. So landscape and trees down to archaeology.
Councillor Reed?
Councillor Reed?
Chairman, just a quickie, it may straggle two headings, actually. With regard to the apartment blocks, the two apartment blocks, there is going to be an underground car parking area, which obviously will be the removal of quite a vast sum of soil and subsoil. The trees look awfully close at certain points. Are we happy that the excavation of such a structure would not have any adverse effect on, well, I think you said, were TPO trees?
Thank you, Chair. I believe, or I know, that the tree officer, Ivan Gerdler, went on site and looked at this issue, and he considers there to be no harm as a result of the basement car parking to the TPA trees along Stopbridge Road. And he's satisfied that the reports given show all the correct information and the development will be acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Megan, can I ask you two questions? One of them is a statement in the landscape and trees report on page 22, where it says that the applicant has agreed to remove some of the hard standing. Do we not insist these days on permeable surfacing rather than hard standing?
I refer to hard standing as it's all hard standing, so it would be permeable as well. That was a reference, we considered there to be too much hard standing, especially in front of the two plots, the semi-detached dwellings, and that has been reduced now. And I believe some of the parking is permeable, but all of it I refer to as hard standing, even if it's permeable or not.
Yeah, good. And then Mr. and Mrs. King were concerned about the movements, assessments, that really doesn't come under the city council, we take advice on the county council. And similarly, they were requesting a crossing point for children wanting to cross. That road is very busy, isn't it, of course, the main road? Is there any way we could put an informative into the county that we would suggest that?
There is currently an island in the middle of the road, on Stopbridge Road, opposite Woodpecker's Drive, which helps the crossing of that road. There is no formal crossing, it depends what they're requiring or asking for. If they're asking for zebra crossing or anything, then it might be different. But there is, there is a photo, I can get one up, can show you. Yeah, you can see there.
Yeah, it would take lots of schoolchildren there, would it?
It wouldn't, no. And the next photo shows it a bit clearer, I think. Yeah, slightly off the screen again.
But it's better than nothing.
Yes.
Mrs. Pennick, is there any way we can advise the county that there's going to be so many more people living in this area that they consider pushing in a crossing?
Chairman, I think what we would suggest is that that's something that the ward members take up with the county council. We can't make an informative of this planning permission, of course, because this would be a planning, if you might, to grant permission today, it would be with the applicant. And the county council haven't required this, and I think had they required it, it would have been a requirement of the planning permission. So I certainly think the scope for ward members to take this up with the county council directly, and then they will look at the volumes and trip movements, but there's no actual requirement in this scheme, Chair.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I know councillor Weir is with us today, one of the ward councillors, so I'm sure that they will take that up. And then finally, Mr. and Mrs. King were concerned about drainage? Megan?
There are two drainage conditions, one regarding to the foul drainage, which they have to seek. I don't know what it is, it's from southern water, they have to seek a connection, that there is sufficient capacity within that area. There is another condition, condition 22, which requires information regarding surface water drainage. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So I think that being all the questions for those sections, Vice Chair, is that correct?
We have a, oh, councillor Reed has indicated he has a question. I don't know whether that's going to be on affordable housing or not, but we do have two other members wishing to ask questions on affordable housing.
Yes, it's going to move. Councillor Reed, is your question on affordable housing?
No.
Okay, well, perhaps we should take him now, then.
Okay, go ahead.
What, you want me now?
Well, the next section is affordable housing, which is the last section. So unless...
What, sorry, it's a highways one.
Okay, go ahead.
During the report, residents were concerned about crossing and recrossing the road because there was no footway currently. And there's no indication that a footway is going to be put in, so that element is still going to continue. Is that correct?
Megan?
Yeah, that is, that is correct, that no footpaths can be put along that Stopbridge Road, that side of Stopbridge Road. The developer did look into this, however, it wasn't possible to do. There was a crossing area, as I said, in front of the site, that you can cross the road on to the other side of Stopbridge Road, and there's a safe access then down to the shops beyond.
Okay, doesn't look very safe to me, but yes, I see what you mean. Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to affordable housing. And we have, I think we have Richard with us this morning as well, from Estates, if any questions are on viability issues. So did you say it was councillor McLean?
Yes, yes, we have councillor McLean and councillor Laming with questions, thank you.
So councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. The viability report, I suppose really what hinges around is, was the viability report written pre-COVID or since COVID has appeared on the screen? Would be my first question. And then the second question would be for the officer, is if it was pre-COVID, what differences will that have made to land values, assuming about an 18-month build-out for this? COVID should be history, and property values will have recovered. So in the affordable housing context, could those questions be answered? Thank you very much.
I'd like to introduce Richard Woodman, who will answer these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor McLean, I think the, I can't remember the exact date of the report when it was submitted, but it was definitely before, I think it was, I think it was early part of last year, I can't remember the exact date, whether it's pre-COVID or pre-COVID, or whether it was the first stages of it. But I think in terms of the, in terms of the viability, it's very much based upon, like Mr. Rees said about the existing use value, is the significant element to it. And I think in terms of land values, those, land values during COVID or currently, obviously the report was based on projections of what they felt sale values would be going forwards. Clearly, at the time of the report, if it was done before COVID, clearly they didn't know COVID was about to happen. And obviously, values in Winchester have held up very, have held up pretty well during COVID. Some, obviously, some people's aspiration of value and what they actually achieve at the end of the day, once it's marketed and once a deal is actually gone through, can be slightly different. But in terms of, in general terms, I mean, I don't, in general terms, I don't think, you know, land values have increased at all, really, in the last sort of, in the last year is, would be my, would be my view.
Supplementary then, if I may. I think the second part of my comment was, this is going to be about an 18-month build-out, I would suspect. That will see probably some fairly large increases in property values. Okay, I'm a crystal ball gazing, but this is Winchester. And, you know, there is a limited housing supply that forces the values up as well. So can you comment on that? Which, I'm struggling with this whole affordability thing, and I need to be right by you that we've not missed something here, because I was starting to feel very, very sad for the developer, having to go through all these pressures.
I think the, yes, I mean, obviously, no one can, it's sort of, as you say, a bit of crystal ball gazing about what, where values might go in the next sort of six, 12 months, six, 12, 18 months. But I think the other, obviously, the viability was done at a point in time. And I think the, it all comes back down to, I think, really sort of existing use values, which is the, which is the critical element to any viability report. And it's the cost of, cost to the developer of effectively pulling the site together and bringing it forward for development. And obviously, owners of properties who want to sort of potentially sell their property for development, it's an RICS sort of agree, accepted process that actually in viability, in viability appraisals, there is obviously, there is allowance for a premium over and above existing use value to... to, that a landowner or homeowner, whichever it happens to be, can expect to allow their land or their property, the property, the land on which the property exists, to allow that property to come forward for development. So I think that definitely increases the upfront cost to the developer of pulling the site together. And obviously, the other element in this particular scenario, which has impacted on the viability, is the position of the covenant. And obviously, quite often, there aren't any covenants, so therefore, there's no need to pay any money to the beneficiary of any covenant. And therefore, the cost of that, cost of releasing that covenant has had to be added to the, effectively, to the land value. And therefore, that's increased the cost of bringing this site forwards. So I think back to Mr. Reece's comment about the site next door, the original house, that was able to support some affordable housing or commuted payment to the local authority. Because obviously, they were just effectively buying one plot, one house, which was sat on a very, very large plot. The difference here is that you've got four properties, and they've all got high existing use values, plus then if you add on the premium to those, to the owners, then that creates a very large existing use value.
Councillor McLean, are you satisfied with that answer?
I think I understand the answer, but I'm not satisfied with the process that gets us to a point where there is no contribution and there is no social housing. If the builder can't afford to develop it, don't develop it. You know, there are things that need to be done by developers, which is putting money into, sorry, putting money into the community. Thank you.
And I know councillor Leaming is waiting to ask a question, but could I just add a supplementary on to this issue? In that it seems a little unfair that affordable housing has to suffer because of the covenants and the premiums having to be paid on the covenants. Why can the developer not just assimilate those when we hear how much they're selling previous houses for?
Hear, hear.
I can't comment on the covenant or what it said, because I say I haven't seen the details of that. And obviously, I've got no, I don't know what capital sum was agreed between Alfred Homes and the beneficiary of the covenant, so I can't comment on that. But yet, yes, it's, I take the point that actually, you know, there is, in a normal course of events, a site like this would have been able to support some form of affordable housing contribution. It's just, it's just, unfortunately, it's just in this situation, in this scenario, there is a large existing use value. If, for instance, if there was only, for instance, two properties on this site rather than four, then, for instance, I mean, I don't know, but I would imagine that there would be more chance of the site being able to support some form of affordable housing contribution. It's just that if you add up the current market value of the four existing houses that make up this development site, and then you add on a premium on top of those existing use, on those market values, to, that the owners would expect, and this is an accepted process, then effectively, that generates a very large, very high existing use value, which unfortunately has a negative impact on the ability for this site to provide any either onsite or commuted payment contribution towards affordable housing.
Thank you. I mean, there's no doubt that this is a very desirable place to live, very close to the city centre and on a bus route. So what would happen to the viability report if the developer manages to sell the house? And presumably, the developer makes an assumption that I will sell this house at X. What will happen if that price then rises considerably from X? So there could have been margin for an affordable contribution. What would happen then? Anything?
Unless, I haven't come across that scenario. I mean, obviously, there is, the viability report that has been produced has been done at a point in time. And when it was done, they estimated what they felt would be their sale values at the end of the development, at completion of the development. Clearly, as time goes on, they, and normally, those values are quite bullish because they appreciate that when the report is being done and when these houses are actually sold, can be, you know, 18 months to two years difference in time. So they're always quite bullish in their estimate of what they believe they can sell them for. Clearly, and I suppose this comes back to Mr. Reece's comment about sometimes they win and sometimes they lose in terms of, if the market increases during the intervening period, then clearly, yes, they might do better. If the market moves against them and it goes down, and then obviously, their viability gets squeezed even more. The other thing, perhaps to say is, between when the viability report was done, which includes build costs, and when the units are actually physically built, construction costs can change. So obviously, with Brexit and the supply of materials and things like that, there's always a chance that the cost of the construction process will change. And therefore, their estimate of what it was at the point at which they did the viability report is one thing. And when they actually, you know, do the development, the actual cost of building the units could well be more than they put in their viability report, which again, is a risk that they take. And, you know, again, could be detrimental to their viability and therefore detrimental to the, to the viability of the scheme.
Thank you. And I presume that you've seen the viability report?
Yes, I have, yes.
Yeah. And presumably, a developer, a good developer would always leave a margin for error, which you allow, do you?
The build costs and the projected market sale values, obviously, the market projected market sale values are, you know, obviously, an estimate of what they believe they can achieve. They don't know what the market is going to be at the point at which they actually come to sell them. They can, they have to sort of make an assumption. And obviously, build costs, they assess the build cost at the point at which the viability is done. And obviously, that build cost can change. And obviously, they haven't put a, they haven't, they've done some investigations in terms of land, in terms of ground conditions and things like that. But obviously, there's a limit to what they, there's a limit to the investigations that they can do, because obviously, the owners of the four houses are living in them, and they can't go and sort of dig up the people's gardens to find out what's underneath. So they're also, the other factor is there, they are having to make assumptions about the ground conditions, which will then help inform their build cost. And therefore, if they do, once a development does start, and they hit problems in the ground which they weren't aware of, which increases the cost of the construction process, clearly, that has a negative impact on the viability of the scheme. And obviously, squeezes any margin that they had allowed for in the viability process.
Thank you very much for your explanation. And I think we've got another councillor, councillor Leaming, who is wanting to ask a question on this issue.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that with viability, you have to take into, and I think that whole legislation was brought in mainly to help the developer when he came across unexpected problems. And that I can accept. But on a normal, on a normal business case, you do your, you do your financial planning on how much something costs you, how much it's going to cost you to build it, how much the land costs, and you work out your selling costs from there. Now, what we've got here is a developer saying, I'm paying 20% more than I need to. I've got to pay this as well. So why should the affordable housing contribution not be included in that as mandatory on this particular build? I'm quite happy if they came back at a later stage and said they got a problem, and could they readjust the affordability contribution after they've sold the properties, but not before, this is, I haven't actually started building. It really is quite frustrating, and I think we need to look at how we can control this better. Because if we look at the planning applications we've had in over the last few years, the number of times high-end builds come back to us with viability changes is getting really quite ridiculous. So what can we do to control this?
That's a difficult, difficult question. Yeah, and I think it's difficult to know if they, some developers, I think some developers do, if things do change through the process, then they do, then they do come back and try, sort of tried on, I suppose, in a way, to say, well, actually, look, our costs have gone up in the intervening time, the viability has got worse, and they look to try and adjust it. Some developers do that. Other developers, I think, I think, take a view that actually, all that happens is they make less profit on the scheme. So they allow a profit, which is perfectly acceptable within any development. And then if that, if the scheme goes well and goes as they had intended or they had assumed, then clearly, they make more of that percentage of profit that they had allowed. If there are more costs that come out of the woodwork, which they weren't initially aware of, then clearly, that has an impact on the amount of profit that they can potentially make. So normally, a developer works on about a 20, in the viability terms, an accepted level of profit is anywhere between 15, sort of between 15 and 20%. Most people put it in at about 17, between 17 and 20%. So if the developer finds costs in the scheme or in the ground or whatever that they weren't aware of, then clearly, that 20, let's say the 20% profit gets hit, and therefore, it eats into their profit margin. So I think some developers, and, you know, I can't, this is just a general comment, that actually, some developers will come back and ask for an amendment, trying to get some sort of amendment. Others will just say, that's the risk we're in, that's the game we play. They play, the game of building houses is inherently a relatively risky business. And therefore, if it goes well, they make quite a lot of their 20% profit. If it doesn't go so well, they make, you know, significantly less than 20%. It depends on how things play out. But I think that's the, I think the only, I don't know whether it's a, I'm not saying it's an accepted way, but I guess what you could do is go to the developer and say, look, you know, once you've actually started on site and you know exactly what your build costs are, can you submit another viability report? Because obviously, the build costs they put in their original viability report were estimated costs based on what they knew at the time, rather than what they actually know, and obviously, what they know when they actually put a spade in the ground might be something different. So that's the only thing I can suggest, really, is that perhaps in certain situations, you ask for an updated viability report at some point through the build process.
Is that possible to do that on this particular application?
Chairman, if I might pop in here and remind members of our policy CP3, which talks about, and forgive me, I thought I had it right here with me. It does allow for, as does national policy, the presumption to enable a developer to submit a viability appraisal if they don't believe they can meet the policy expectation of providing 40% on site, and that's what we have here. And I just wanted to be clear that, you know, and I understand why members are saying what they're saying, well, you know, rather than not see it developed, then not bring 40% forward. But that isn't a presumption nationally or locally, and we have to assess what's in front of us. Now, I have heard some suggestions about uplift clause, and I think the only way we would recommend that to you is if we had any doubts over the viability appraisal that we have in front of us. And I think what we've heard from Richard and what Megan's heard through her assessments is that there isn't, you know, the viability appraisal is robust, it sets out all those reasonable expectations that this isn't a viable scheme to deliver an affordable housing contribution. And therefore, your officer recommendation is that this scheme is acceptable without. And I understand that's a bit tricky, and none of us want to say that, but there we are. And I think the other point to make out is that there will be a SIL payment due as a result of this scheme. And I think it's in the region of $480,000. So that will come into the City Council's funds to make SIL contributions and to deal with items on the 123 list. And I think I just wanted to remind members that we just have to assess the scheme on its merits and consider the viability appraisal. And I think Richard's tried to sort of set out how he's assessed that viability appraisal and is satisfied that it meets the requirements in RICS, and it's robust. And I think on that basis, nothing more we could really do, Chair. And I thought just would like to chip in and help you out there. Thank you.
Thank you. So have we finished that issue?
I'm afraid not, Chair. We have councillors Clear and Reed who would like to ask questions. And councillor McLean, would I like a second bite of the cherry, if that's possible? Thank you.
So councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry to put you through this, Richard, but it might be the $64,000 question. But do you feel, I ask, do you feel the value generated by the development would be more than the cost of developing it? Is that a difficult question or?
So just so unclear, what you're asking, are you asking that is the, is the, the sale values of all the units, is that less than the build cost?
Yeah. No. Builders are bound to get more back, and, you know, builders do. I'm not being rude, but surely the value, once the development's done, is, I would think, is going to be more for them than the actual cost of developing it as they go along. Can you understand where I'm?
Yeah, and I think if you, I think if you, they're sort of very, in sort of crude terms, there's three elements to the construction process. There's the land value, there's the build cost, and then there's the profit margin. So and then if those three, and obviously, there's other things, but I'm trying to simplify it very crudely here. So I think the build cost is a significant element of it. Obviously, the land value to buy the land in the first place is a very significant element quite often as well. So I think, I think the, clearly, the end sale value, if you add up all the projected sale values of all the completed units, that figure, that total figure, that gross development value is in sort of, in commercial parlance, that's what it's called, that gross development value figure is, is high or has to be higher than the cost of the land value, the build cost and all the other costs added together. Otherwise, no developer would ever build anything.
Okay, and sorry to put you through it, but thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. When you put together a viability package, you indicated that the build cost is obviously a considerable sum. Is the package that you look at based on that particular site and that site alone? Because here we have a developer that is operating three sites in the close vicinity. So what element do you use when you've got a multiple build out very close to this one?
In terms of viability terms, you can only have regard to the figure relating to this particular development. So I can't, I can't sort of look at the cost or, I mean, I think what you're, I think what you're sort of perhaps driving at is that because they're doing one site next door, they haven't, would they have all the same site setup costs and all of that? Because they can move fairly easily from one site to the next and build out the next one without having to have all the setup costs, which you would normally have if you were doing one site on its own. And therefore, there may be some economies of scale if they're And, and, and there might be, and therefore there may be some economies of scale if they're building one, the site next door, which, and then they can hopefully move on to the one next door, next door to that. And I think in terms of viability terms, you know, that, that, that's not, that doesn't make a huge amount of difference in terms of, you know, money, money in value terms. And I think, but in, but in pure viability assessment situation, you've got to, you, you can only really look at the value, look at the figures relating to the site that the viability appraisal relates to.
Thank you. That's what I thought you were going to say. So bulk purchasing could reduce the price of, the cost of materials. Would that be a logical way of looking at it?
Potentially, I mean, i, i, if they, if they knew that, it, it, obviously, the, but the, at the moment, they don't, I, I, I would be surprised if the developer was thinking about, let's say, I, I mean, I don't know, bricks or cement or concrete or whatever. I, I, I would be surprised if they were thinking, oh, you know, they're trying to get a, a good deal from the suppliers because they hope they'll get planning permission on the site next door and therefore they can, they can put an order in for more because they know they might need it on the site next door. I think that's, I think that's probably a step, I think that's a, that's a, an assumption too far. And I think, I don't, I, I can't believe any developer would make that assumption to try and get a better buying price in terms of material costs, in the hope that they would be able to get planning on a site next door, which they can, we can sort of move on to next. I think that's probably, yeah, I, 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 I think that's probably a risk too far.
We all live on the edge. Thank you very much.
And finally councillor McLean.
Thank you. It will be my final one, I promised, Chair.
No, but finally in the list of?
No, 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 I was, no, it doesn't matter, councillor Rutter said something. The, our policy, basically CP3, this viability report, the whole thing, as I understand it, CP3 hovers around this viability report. So it would appear that, that the viability report, viability report is effectively driving a cart and horses through CP3 because if they write it in a certain way and we accept it in that same way, it then makes, takes away the, the teeth of CP3. Am I, am I right or am I overreading it?
Forgive me, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, the, the, well, I think my, my view, my view on that is that obviously any developer looking to, or has to comply, any developer looking to build, build residential has to comply with, comply with the terms of our planning policy.
Appear to comply, I think.
Yeah, and, and, and obviously they, then if they feel they can, if they feel they can comply, then obviously, you know, then they'll, then, then, then they won't need to provide a viability statement. They really only provide a viability statement when they feel they can't comply with the planning viability provisions in, in order to effectively demonstrate why they can't, why they can't comply. And so I, I think that's the, and, so, so, yeah, so, so it, it only really, it, it only really comes up where there is, where they feel there is, that they have a problem. Where a developer realizes they can comply with the, with the affordable housing requirements, they, they, they factor those into their scheme, they, they work with the planning officer and demonstrate that they, you know, that, that, their scheme can comply and therefore it's, it's accepted. And, and so it never, a viability report never material or has to materialise. I, I, it was just, it's just, I think unfortunate that on this, on this site, if, for instance, if this site was more of a greenfield site rather than having four existing valuable properties sat on it, that really is the crux of the issue. I, i, if it was more, sort of very much more greenfield, then I, I would, I would definitely expect this site to be able to provide the affordable housing or, or, or at least a decent contribution towards it. So I think it's, it's just, if there was one house on it, like, like Mr Chris, Mr Re said, on the other, on the previous, on the previous site, then yes, there's a less, there's less existing use value and therefore more capacity for the site to provide the affordable housing provision that is required. So it's just, it's just unfortunate that on this particular scenario, there is such a high existing use value.
But if it was a greenfield site, the houses would sell for less money, so. So I said enough, thank you very much. Now that's, you've answered it.
Chairman, with your permission, I just would like to add that this isn't contrary to policy CP3 or, or driving a, a cart hole through, I think as councillor McLean suggested. The policy allows for a viability assessment because national guidance requires that and the local plan policy wouldn't have been found sound without it. So the policy accepts that not every scheme will be able to deliver 40% affordable housing and as Richard said, it's in those scenarios when we have viability appraisals to assess and measure the realism of that. And I think that's what this viability appraisal has done. You know, I share your frustration, we all want affordable housing delivered across the district, but we do have to assess each case on its merits and make an assessment in line with our policy and national guidance, which does allow for a viability assessment when a scheme would otherwise not be viable to bring forward. You need a willing seller, don't you, and a willing developer to bring those two assets forward. And in this case, that's what we have in front of us and we therefore have to consider it in line with CP3. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Richard. I think we've reached the, the end of that section, have we, Vice Chair?
Yes, no further questions, Chair.
So we'll move, there being no more questions on anything else?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you. We'll move into debate.
Shall I start things off, Chair?
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a very difficult application in that I think we've all agreed that we are very disappointed, shocked and dismayed even, that there is no contribution at all to affordable housing from a site which is going to produce 19 very high standard, very expensive homes. If, if this whole, if this site had come forward with the other neighbouring sites, it's the same developer, that would have been 38 dwellings, that would have been 15 affordable homes. Even on its own, this site should be providing seven affordable homes. And I'm disappointed that that is not the case. However, we have to abide by our own planning policy and we have to abide by national planning policy. And national planning policy says that developers can come forward, can provide a viability assessment, and if they can prove to our officers' content that the site is not viable for providing affordable housing, we have to accept that. Now, I think from the point of view of the whole community, if a site is so expensive to develop, that, you know, we should say, should, should we be developing this site at all? Because there's no benefit, the only benefit to the community as a whole will be some more expensive houses on the market, okay? Admittedly, some of them are smaller flats and that's to be welcomed. But in terms of the community benefit of this development, apart from some SIL money, community infrastructure levy, development money, I'm afraid there's very little. And in fact, you know, the community will have to put up with the development, the hours and, and months of, of, of constant building going on. However, I'm afraid that given the way that previous applications have gone, when we've turned them down for, for, for good community reasons but not good planning reasons, they've just gone straight to appeal and been overturned. And I don't want to see that happen with this application. So with huge regret, I am going to be accepting the officer's recommendation, accepting the officer's point of view on the viability and accepting that the developer has gone to a lot of trouble to improve their original proposals. So I will be supporting the officers with regret. Thank you. Chair, we now have councillor Laming and councillor Clear for debate.
Thank you. Councillor Laming.
Thank you, Chair. This is a very difficult application. I'm really concerned about the affordable housing and the viability report because I feel that it's being used against the community. And we're on a development this size, the developer knows his costs before he starts even to purchase the properties. So I am extremely concerned with that and I'm also concerned that this is, viability is being used against us in many places. If I look at the scheme as a whole and put that part to one side as I must because of national policy, I find that it is extremely overdevelopment as such in that particular area. It's changing the whole nature of the area in terms of its visual outlook and what it's doing to the community. And I feel very strongly about that because that was a nice open space with good views and made the entrance to Winchester from Stockbridge a very pleasant drive in. This is going to change and it's going to start looking like overdevelopment all the way through. So therefore from that point of view, I should be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair. I realise that viability examines cost and value in relation to development proposals and there are increasing challenges that might impact on the delivery of the desired return. But policy compliant, compliant means development which fully complies with up to date planning policies. I feel the price paid for land should not be a relevant justification for failing to accord with relevant policies. And surely our aim is to secure maximum benefits in the public interest when granting planning permission. Having said all that, I was going to vote against, I'll be honest with you, but I'm reading policy CP3 over and over again. And I think if we, it would go to appeal if this wasn't passed today, but I'm very, very reluctant to vote with the officer's recommendation, but I will because of CP3. We, I don't think it would stand up if we turned this down on CP3. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Clear. Vice Chair, any further?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor McLean and councillor Reed. Thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. I've struggled all the way through this application, from first reading it to listening to all the, all the comments by members and officers. You just do a simple sum, if you just take something like £10,000 per property and call it a contribution to social housing, it comes up with enough money to build some houses. These houses are going to sell for a premium, they always do in Winchester. I think the, the use of CP3 to say, okay, we'll, we'll have to stick with CP3 as a policy. Our policy is also to build social housing, 40% on this development would be the right figure. I don't think we have to ask for that. If the developer had come forward with a reasonable contribution to social housing, we wouldn't have spent the last hour talking about this. So I'm sorry, I will be voting against it, but I'll hunt, if, if, if it does get overturned to find a reason, a policy reason to do so, but I just feel that profit is coming before the city. Thank you.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. I note all that's been said by my fellow members, but going back to, I think it was Mrs King in her presentation, was very concerned about the Stockbridge Road itself and the amount of traffic. Now, I must admit, ever since our traffic officers no longer sit on the planning committee for their advice, we do not get a good service from them. They will not come and see you, they will not come in to the meetings. We have to rely on a report put together from a desktop situation. We have three major, well, major, we have three considerable developments going to take place in the one very, same location. The opportunity was there to install a footway on the side of the development. This has been missed. So we're now, don't encourage, we now force people to cross the road in order to cross back. That to me is a health and safety issue in itself, purely because we didn't have the foresight to put in a footway that would lead to a continuing footway further along. My daughter-in-law always says to me, and she's Swedish, why do our housing cost so much? Well, I think we, we are aware why it costs so much because people wish to have large profits from their transactions. However, getting back to the application itself, I believe that it does fit in with our policies. Maybe our policies aren't right. We are reviewing our policies. However, at this point in time, and without the highway engineers to support, I think we would not stand too much of a chance if it went to appeal. Reluctantly, as some of my other colleagues, I will go along with the officer's recommendation on this occasion. Viability is a problem. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Reed. Vice Chair, any further contributions in debate?
No more debate, Chair.
And I, I would like also just to thank Richard very much from the States for coming along and explaining the lottery that developers have to go through in assessing a viability statement. I'm not sure that you've convinced all of us that, and I do think that if a developer has the prospect of several sites, it would have been better had a master plan come in, albeit that it would be built in stages. I do think that this site or these sites, the three of them, would have benefited from a master plan. So then perhaps we might have got some affordable housing out of it. I do feel very sorry for the people who've spoken in objection today, Mr and Mrs King and Mr Blackman. We do understand your points and we've tried to explain, to explore them for you. Yes, the developer will probably go to appeal if we refuse it. But it is, it is a well-designed scheme. I don't wish that to detract from the scheme. It's nicely landscaped and when you look at it, they're quite pleasing to the eye. And it would have been good if there had been some contribution back from the developer, but we had it explained to us with various reasons it set out in the report and Richard gave us a full explanation as to why not. I do think we need to address some of these issues in our new local plan and I shall be talking to the portfolio holder about it. But yes, I, I'm a reluctant supporter of the decision to approve and that's what I would do. So I don't think there are any more contributions, so we will move to the vote. This application has been recommended for approval. The conditions are set out on page 25 to 31 and informatives on page 31. There are no extra conditions on the update sheet and I'll hand over to Dave for the vote for the recommendation of approval for this application. Dave, over to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all councillor Clear.
Four.
Councillor Evans.
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Laming.
Against.
Councillor McLean.
Against.
Councillor Reed.
Four.
Councillor Raffel.
Four.
And councillor Rutter.
Four.
So that's six members, four and two against, Chair.
Thank you very much. So that application is approved and we spent some time on it and so I'm going to now take a break and I make it 20 past 11. So we will recon- So we will reconvene just after half past.
Yes, yes, of course. Thank you, Chair, and welcome back, members. Councillor Cleare?
Yes, I'm back, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Evans?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you again, councillor Laming?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor McLean?
Here.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Thank you again, councillor Rafel?
Present.
And councillor Rutter?
Present.
Yes, thank you, Chair, that's all members in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are now starting with agenda items eight, which is Holly Tree Cottage Park Road, case number 20/01901/HOU. The case officer is Cameron Taylor. Good morning, Cameron.
Good morning.
And when you're ready, please start your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So this presentation is for a planning application at Holly Tree Cottage, which is for a rear two-story extension. Here we have the location and site plan in which we can see the site is located to the south of Park Road with a private drive access to Lawn End located along the eastern boundary, with dwellings on for Denham Close and a private access for Denham Close members located along the western boundary. And on the site plan, the nearest dwelling located to the extension from Denham Close's side will be number 20, where the boundary is located 9.4 metres from the extension, with dwelling itself situated over 35 metres from the extension itself, whilst Willow's located to the eastern side of the site is around 14 metres from the extension. Here we have an aerial photograph of the site with a site marked by the yellow triangle, which shows the residential nature of the area, followed by a map with a sign marked by the green triangle, which shows the transport links, with the bus stop further north along Courtney Road, located around 200 metres from the site, whilst the bus stop to the B3047 located around 300 metres from the site itself. Here we have the south elevational drawings, with the top being existing and bottom being proposed. We can see that the central dorm will be replaced by the two-story extension itself, whilst retaining the two dorms to the left and the right-hand side of the photo as it's viewed, along with the extension itself being set in from the side elevation. And here we have a photo from the south elevation, of the south elevation looking from within the garden of the site itself, followed by the west elevational drawings, again with the top being the existing and the bottom being proposed, which we can see the projection from the rear elevation in which the extension will have. And next we have a photo of the west elevation, taken from within the parking area for the site and within a number of, for the parking for the properties of Denham Close itself, which we can see there's a 1.8m close board fence which runs along the western boundary, along with the garage structure for Denham Close on the right-hand side of the photo. Next we have the southwest elevational drawings, top being existing, bottom as proposed, followed by views to the south elevation from the private access to the west of the site, and views to the north down the private access, where the property is located on the right-hand side, with the garage structure located to the left of the photo. Here we have the east elevational drawings, in which there is a high-level window proposed for the existing elevation of the property itself, alongside a high-level window which is put on the extension. Here we have the east elevation as viewed from the private access of Lawn End, followed by the east elevation as viewed from Park Road itself. Here we have the ground floor plan drawings, in which we can see the clear source step inwards for the east elevation of the property, followed by the first floor plan drawings. Here we have the tree constraints drawing, with the nearest root protection zone being situated around 6.5 metres from the rear elevation of the property as it currently is, with the tree itself being situated around 15 metres from the rear elevation, with the photo on the right-hand side looking towards the trees from the, from the rear of the property itself. Next we have the views towards neighbouring properties to the west, which is towards Denham Close from the ground floor, followed by the views towards Park Road, which is from the private, private drive access to Lawn End itself, with the property on the left-hand side. Here we have the first set of 3D renditions of the extension in situ on the proposed, on the dwelling itself. And here we have the second set of 3D drawings for the proposed extension. And therefore, based on the report, I, these proposals, I'd mind for this proposal to be submitted for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cameron. And we will now move on to the public speaking. The, we have three speakers today. The first speaker is Sean McPike. Good morning, Mr McPike.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good morning. And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay. So the original planning proposal included a double-story garden room. That application was withdrawn following a high number of objections. The applicant has now merely split the original application into two parts, this application and a permitted development application that was approved in November for the now single-story garden. So when deciding upon the impact of this planning application, we do urge you to consider it alongside the additional permitted development garden, which is 45 square metres in size and 12 metres long at its widest point. This results in a huge change to the overall cycle together. So we do ask the permitted development rights for Part One, Class E, be at least restricted if this extension application. The extension has second-floor, full-height floor and ceiling windows, a large wraparound balcony which will directly overlook neighbours' properties, taking away neighbours' privacy, particularly to the willows on Park Road. Surrounding properties do not have balconies, so this would set the norm more precisely. And from this viewing platform, the applicant's family will have a direct line of sight into several other properties, kitchens and dinner rooms, as well as living areas and gardens, whilst the applicant's new property itself will have its own. So this design is therefore in conflict with the 16-year deal. The scale of the extension is considered out of proportion and character to the attached and surrounding properties. It will exceed five and a half metres from the existing house on two stories and significantly, significantly reduce the size of the garden and adding the garden room in excess. Site location redline, as far as we're aware, it is a legal requirement that the redline on the location plan should include all land necessary to carry out the proposed development, including access and car parking. We feel this is not accurately shown on the plan submitted by the applicant. The site includes several matured trees with TPOs. There is no mention of how these will be protected during the build. And bats are also seen at dust over the gardens and we presume several serve a role here. The property is accessed from Park Road through a residence garage area. The residence garage area is subdivided into land ownership parcels. The applicants own one garage and one parking space in this subdivided area. Access to Holly Tree Cottage is over other residents' property. And to date, access has not been given by those residents to use that land for this construction. Three of the six residents who own these parcels of land are elderly and frail and being expected to find alternative parking as proposed by the applicant during the build of this scale is unacceptable. And there is also no space for trees and then parking or managing delivery of building materials on land owned by the applicant. I just want to point out one piece, clarify from Cameron.
Last three minutes, Chair.
All right. I just wanted to clarify one piece from Cameron's meeting, presentation. He did show an access footpath. That is not the applicant's access footpath. That access footpath is privately owned by Denham Court Management Company.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr McPike, thank you. There could be questions for you. If I could just start, let's try to do a little faint. Could you just tell where you, where you live?
So if there were, so on the plan, I am number 18, Denham Close. I'm to the left of the site plan.
Okay.
Number 18 was referenced by Cameron, yeah?
Yep, okay, thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions for Mr McPike?
None indicated, Chair, thank you.
Listen, thank you very much, Mr McPike. If you, obviously you're going to stay in the meeting, but if you could turn your microphone and your video off, it just cuts down the noise.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. So the next person on my list is one of the ward councillors, councillor Dominic Hiscock. Good morning, councillor Hiscock.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the committee.
Good morning. You know the, the drill and you have five minutes when you're ready.
I can't use them, Chair, thank you. I'm happy to talk about this application on behalf of all the local people who have very severe misgivings about how this proposal will affect, will impact on their lives. You have already heard the worries about the difficulties and disruption that they will face during the period the scheme is being built out and about their apprehension about the loss of privacy that they feel when enjoying their own private gardens and the fears that some of them, sorry, that some of the occupants have, will be able to see, the occupants of the new house, I will be able to see into their kitchens and other rooms from the balcony. It is the balcony that gives me most concern. Balconies are fashionable at the moment on new builds and where everyone is buying at the same time and they know what they're letting themselves in for. But to build them in an area where neighbours have been living without being in view from one another for over the years is very different. It is seen as a first-floor platform from which the owner can survey their own garden, but it also allows them to look into several of the gardens of their neighbours, maybe not from very close up, but from higher up, which is the literal meaning of overlooking. I understand the balcony will be accessible from both the bedroom and the office, so it's likely to be used frequently during the summer months when people most value their own private space. Both the people on the balcony and the same folk on the ground will be visible to each other, hardly private then. My other concern is the risk of light pollution from the much larger first-floor windows and the balcony at night. Other residents will be looking up towards this spot from their own gardens or from their own houses. And this will be more clearly visible at night, at the very least as a glow, of not the full view of the balcony lights, if not the full view of the balcony lights, sorry. Can we also have some clarity about the status of the garden room proposal? Although the paper says the application for the garden room was withdrawn in July last year, the garden room was actually granted a certificate of lawful development in November, soon after it was withdrawn. No work has started yet and it is not shown on the plan in any way. So what will be the cumulative effect of all the developments proposed on this site? That's it, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hiscock. We'll just wait to see if they've got any questions for you.
I have a question, if that's okay, Chair. Nobody else has indicated a question.
Thank you, councillor Rutter.
Thank you, good morning, councillor Hiscock.
Good morning, councillor.
Yes, I don't, I don't see anything about this garden room in our papers. So what is, where is it proposed to put a garden room?
Well, it's not shown on the plan, but we do know that the certificate of.
I know that it's not the application before us, but it is going to have an impact on the cumulative effect, as you say. So if you could just, is it, is it going to be built in the garden?
Yes, I believe so.
At the bottom of the garden, sorry.
I don't know, it's not shown on the plan.
No, it isn't, okay. All right, well, it's not.
There is a certificate of lawfulness issued in November. Perhaps the officer can help us with that.
Ah, there we are.
Oh, there we are, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed and thank you for your answer, councillor Hiscock.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, but we're obviously going to ask about that later. No more questions, is that correct, Vice Chair?
That is correct, Chair, no more questions.
Councillor Hiscock, thank you very much for coming along. And now we have the applicant, who's obviously a supporter, Tom Oldroyd. Good morning, Mr Oldroyd.
Good morning, everyone. I'm aware of, I'm aware I've got three minutes, so I'll try and talk quickly because I've got quite a lot to say. My name is Tom Oldroyd, I'm an architect with 20 years' experience. Myself, my wife and our kids moved to Holly Tree Cottage in January 2020. We moved from a sort of four-bed townhouse with a small garden to this three-bed property which has a larger garden, which we love. We bought the house with a view to making some changes to add a fourth bedroom for guests and to increase the size of the living area. An initial planning application was made during the first lockdown and several comments were received from our neighbours. I withdrew this application, addressed a number of these concerns with a revised design. I liaised with Denham Close management committee, sent them my revised design and offered to speak to any of my neighbours who had concerns. The committee did not respond and preferred to use the planning portal to make their comments on my revised submission. The comments from the neighbours are really focused on two key areas, the shared parking area and the overlooking of the extension to Denham Close Gardens. So I've produced some supplementary drawings here. So the first drawing focuses on parking and access. So Holly Tree Cottage has one parking space and a separate single garage, both are shown with the red dotted line. The intention is for all site access to be from the shared parking area. The skip will be located in the Holly Tree Cottage parking space. Access to the site is shown by the blue dotted line. Access will be down the steps and along the west access path, which is within the Holly Tree Cottage boundary. Prior agreement of larger vehicles will be made to the top of the steps, which has been used by removals vehicles previously. The contractor will generally use Courtney Road parking permit for his parking. All working hours will be agreed with neighbours. A precedent has been set for using the shared parking area and building an extension. The planning portal shows that the 18 Denham Close was awarded planning permission in 2014 for a single-story extension which has since been built. This neighbour has a garage and a parking space on the shared parking area and this neighbour is representing the objections to the committee and has complained about using the shared parking area. I look forward to engaging further with 18 Denham Close to understand how they built their extension using that shared parking area. If we go on to the next slide, please. Cameron, Cameron, could you go on to the next slide? Thank you. Okay, this slide addresses the overlooking comments from Denham Close. So the design of the balcony, the drawing highlights the location of the balcony in orange. The narrow balcony facing south is designed as a transitional external space and is too narrow to have seating. The red dotted lines show the sightlines from the new bedroom. Views from the balcony to the west are mitigated by a high wall. Views to the east are mitigated by a low-level wall and timber trellis. The view from the balcony is designed to face due south to overlook the Holly Tree Cottage garden. The cantilevered balcony increases the privacy from the internal bedroom window as the window is set back and screened from the east and the west. Without the balcony, the bedroom window would have a clear, oblique view of Denham Close. The overlooking of gardens in Denham Close, okay. So the oblique view.
That's, that's three minutes has expired, Chair.
Yeah, I have to, have to stop you there, but thank you, thank you very much.
Sorry, I've just got a couple of fundamental things, sorry. I'm really sorry. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to highlight that I planted an evergreen laurel tree. Sorry, I planted an evergreen laurel tree specifically to address the overlooking.
I have to ask you to stop, Mr Oldroyd, but the committee will ask you questions and possibly what you wanted to say can come out in those questions.
Okay, apologies.
I'm sorry, I have to be strict, but we have to treat everybody equally. So Vice Chair, any questions for Mr Oldroyd?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Reed with a question, thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Mr Oldroyd.
Hello.
Have you done anything in the garden to mitigate? Have you done anything in the garden to mitigate overlooking?
Yes, thank you for asking. Yes, so what I've done is I've been very, very mindful of the comments on the portal and I basically have analysed the gap, looking on to Denham Close and I've planted a laurel tree, which is an evergreen tree and it's about six metres high. So the first photo shows the gap where the overlooking would occur with the extension and the second photo shows the six-metre-high laurel tree, which I've planted recently. So I'm very, very conscious of the comments and I've really tried my best to address, you know, to address this concern and I take it very, very seriously.
Thank you, Mr Oldroyd.
Thank you, Mr Oldroyd, could I ask you about the garden room? Which is not part of the application, but just out of interest.
Yeah, sure, it's, it's, it's basically, we have an area at the end of the garden which is not, it's not grass, it's like a gravel area between TPO trees and for my two kids, I really just wanted to use this area as a sort of indoor play area for them. So it's basically a big shed that sits on top of piles that will not damage the TPO tree roots, I've spoken to your tree officer and it's basically a low-level, single-story internal space where the kids can play, just to give them some sort of internal space in the winter, really.
Thank you. And do you have a lawful developments certificate for that?
Yes, yes, I do.
Yeah, okay. And then we also heard from, I think councillor Hiscock, that the balcony, if I could go back to the balcony, because that seems to be the contentious issue. The balcony, you're high up, so you'll be able to see more when you're an architect, so you could assess that for me?
Yeah, well, what I've tried to do is to mitigate the view, as I said, so the view goes straight down the garden and essentially to the west. I've extended the line of the wall to basically force the eye down the garden. And what this actually does is, I mean, the majority of the time would be spent inside that new bedroom space because it's a very narrow balcony, it's not somewhere you would hang out, it's a transitional balcony. So if you didn't have the balcony there, then you'd have a much clearer, oblique view of Denham Close. So in my view, the balcony actually helps mitigate the overlooking. I do understand that, you know, the comments that have gone before, but I think, I think it's actually, between the first application and the second application, I amended the design to increase this high-level wall to the west, which creates that privacy and the setback of the bedroom forces the eye down Holly Tree Cottage garden.
Okay. And what is the width then of the balcony? Because you say it's not, not really for sitting out in.
I think it's, it's about 1.2 metres, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then there is a sort of balcony round the side, is there, as well?
There is, but that's got a low-level wall with a trellis and we want to main, you know, we want to maintain privacy there because that's, that's a window into our master bedroom. So we don't, you know, we don't want, so, so we want to make sure that we maintain that privacy. But I've spoken in detail to the residents at the Willows and they, you know, they seem to be, you know, they, they, they have not objected in the same way that the Denham Close residents have, so we have, they seem quite happy.
Yeah, and they're nearer to you than I see.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then if you could just go back to the, the, the first slide that you showed us, or if somebody could go back, that was helpful that you showed the route in and your garage, but what is the other red bit then? The other red bit is garaging belonging to Denham Gardens.
So the, the red dotted lines, the top red dotted line is my, is our garage.
Yeah.
There, and the, the bottom red dotted line shows my, my parking space.
Yeah.
So that, that is the land that we own that...
Right.
My neighbour was talking about and...
The space in between?
The space in between is, the garage is owned by Gable End and the parking space is owned by Gable End, so...
Yeah.
I've spoken to those guys and what I would do is when I put the skip up, I would kind of put some board up and make sure there's no damage to their car and they're completely on board with that. So I've got a strategy.
There was a concern of a construction traffic.
Well, there was, but I've tried to, so there would be occasional deliveries and the only place that we're allowed to get deliveries would be down our steps along our, you know, as per the blue dotted line, along our route which we own. But these would be very occasional and any contractor parking would be using our visitor permit on Courtney Road. That's the answer.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, any further questions for Mr Oldroyd?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming along today, Mr Oldroyd. Obviously you're going to stay in the meeting, but if you could just turn your mic and your camera off, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Cameron, would anything you want to update the committee on before we go into committee questions?
No, I don't have any, anything to add, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So we'll start with our planning considerations on page 55 and if we could look at principle of development and design and layout.
No questions indicated, Chair.
Nope. Okay, so let's move on then to the impacts. Impact on the character of the area, impact on neighbouring property.
No questions indicated, Chair.
Cameron, could I, I just ask you, obviously we've heard Mr Oldroyd's experience as an architect of overlooking from the balcony. Could I just ask you for your assessment of, will there be overlooking?
Yes, obviously, rent and amenity is one of the key impacts we do obviously look at and so my consideration was looking at the distance between the extension itself towards neighbouring properties, towards the main outdoor amenity areas of the property itself, as well as the elevations of the properties. I believe they're over 30 metres from the very, the nearest edge of the extension itself, which on the balcony, as Mr Oldroyd had said himself, had they've extended that wall to help focus channels or the views towards the bottom end and given the distance towards the rear elevations and outdoor amenity area of the neighbouring properties are over 30 metres away, then I do consider there to be significant adverse overlooking impacts towards the main areas for the neighbouring properties.
And councillor Hiscock's concerns were two, really. One was that you're higher up, you're more visible, two, and then secondly, that it would be more intrusive at night.
Regarding being higher up, it might potentially increase views and sort of during the overlooking assessment, however, it is still sort of a fairly significant gap between the actual extension itself and the, and the property in outdoor, main outdoor amenity area, not sort of the bottom end of the gardens. So that's all why I'd consider it to not cause, cause significant adverse overlooking, as I say, given the fair significant distance along with the consideration of the existing properties there have two-storey windows which also look directly down their properties as well.
Would, would there be any lighting on the balcony at all?
I had not received any sort of specific plans highlighting specific lighting on the balcony itself. There would only be lighting I'm aware of would be inside the new proposed bedroom.
And do we need, do you think, to put a condition on that there shouldn't be lighting?
I believe if, if there was to be proposed lighting for the actual balcony itself, then we should get it so that they provide plans to ensure that it doesn't sort of create too much light bleed and that would affect the, the sort of, affect the surrounding properties in and of itself by being too bright or too, or the direction in which the light, if, if that was to be the case, there would be lighting proposed.
So currently there can't be lighting on, on the balcony.
There hasn't been anything highlighted on the lighting, highlighted to be lighting on the balcony and as, and yet there isn't any condition stipulating for any potential lighting to need to be shown prior to the addition to it being on the balcony itself.
Would we need to add that as a condition, Chair?
Yes, I am a little confused, Cameron, I'm sorry. So I'll, I'll take Mrs Pinnock because she's got her camera on.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think, you know, I, I think it's a fair point that's been raised, Chair, and we could add a condition on that said there should be no external lighting to that first-floor patio area without our prior approval and it's not to say there shouldn't be any lighting, it's just that we want to control the type of lighting, so we ensure that light spillage is cowed, if you like. You can put a cowl on different lighting and it might be high level, low level and the level of luminance. So I think it's certainly reasonable to, given the concerns we've heard, I don't think that's an unreasonable condition to require those details, Chair, if, if external lighting is proposed at that balcony area.
Yeah.
Chairman, while I've got you, I also noticed as well a slight error in condition two on the papers. I think Cameron has just gotten to add the approved plans and so if you're minded to approve this, we'd ask you to amend condition two as well.
I'm so sorry, but you just mentioned, do you want to add to it?
This is off the, the plans list that we would expect the development to be undertaking. It's a technical omission, but we would just, your permission, like to add those plans into condition two.
Oh, I see, the plans aren't there, so they need to be written in.
It's just a technical error, but we might as well pick it up now and get it right, haven't we, Chair?
And so this would be an extra condition, condition five?
Condition five, yes.
To it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, so back to the members' questions. Any more on the two impacts, Vice Chair?
No questions, Chair.
So let's take questions on all the rest of it, so that's landscape and trees, highways and parking and all the others.
No questions again, Chair, thank you.
So we're into debate?
I'm happy to kick things off again, Chair, if that's all right with you.
Someone has to.
Exactly. Thank you, Chair. I, I had my doubts about this application, I was concerned about overlooking from a balcony, but I'm very pleased that Mr Oldroyd came along and explained exactly what he has in mind. I think that the balcony wall and the trellising and planting that they have planned for the balcony all mitigates any possible concerns that neighbours might have and indeed, you know, it's, it's in their own interests, as, as you said, it's, it's only a bedroom and they certainly wouldn't want overlooking into their bedroom, so they certainly have no look overlooking out of it. It's a very small balcony, I, I don't think it's designed to be used for, for sitting and eating breakfast or anything. It's, 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 it's sort of part of the whole design, but, but, but it's more of a Juliet balcony than, than anything else, I think. I am reassured that the applicant is going to liaise with his neighbours about the problems around the build and, and shared, shared access and so on. It's always a problem with these, with these houses that have shared access, but I'm reassured from what he said that, that he will take neighbours' consideration, neighbours' views into consideration. So I'm happy to go ahead and support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair. We also have councillor Gordon Smith with debates, thank you.
Councillor Gordon Smith, another architect?
Well, landscape architect, there you go. No, I thought it was quite an ingenious design, fitting in, into an awkward site. He's obviously thought about the construction and access problems. I mean, there is the issue of the limited parking space and the additional bedroom, but I think we all know on the planning committee, parking comes up as an objection on just about every one of them. So I'm happy to support this, I think it's a quite clever bit of design and appropriate.
Thank you. Any further questions, Vice Chair?
No further debate, Chair.
No, and I, I too have written down, it's a very interesting design. I love the bit of the patio underneath the balcony. I know the balcony is not popular for, with the neighbours, but I am satisfied with Mr Oldroyd's description and I can see that building up the wall, building up the terrace does give both neighbours and the family privacy. I would like to suggest to the committee the extra condition that we're not banning lighting, but we're just requiring the details, if they do want lighting, of, of any sort of lighting that they want to put there, so that that can be controlled. I think we have addressed the concerns of the neighbours. I'm slightly concerned about construction traffic, but no, no doubt that will sort itself out because although we hear that they can use one of the spaces on the site and one of the parking permits, my experience of parking traffic is it's more than two vans, but no doubt they can sort that out. And it has been well-designed and I think it will be a, a, a nice addition to the neighbourhood. So I shall also be supporting. So if there's...
Chair, Chair, we have a question from councillor McLean, if that's okay?
Yes, councillor McLean? Councillor McLean? Councillor McLean?
Hello, can you hear, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you now.
Oh, thank you. Now, our team stopped operating for a second.
Yeah.
You're talking about putting a condition in on lighting, but is, are we talking about a condition for lighting for that balcony? Because they may want to put security lighting in the car park or around the car park areas, which you would then have to condition that as well.
Yes, I think the concern came from councillor Hiscock's comment that he was concerned about lighting at night, balconies being more visible and then the Mrs Pinnock suggested that there should be no external lighting on the balcony, I think we were talking about, without prior approval.
Can we just clarify, it's the balcony only we're talking about, not the whole building?
Well, I was, I don't know what the committee, I'm going to...
I wasn't sure.
Committee, yeah, yeah. Mrs Pinnock? Your meeting, Mrs Pinnock, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We've got a bit different scenarios with microphones today, it's a little bit off. Yeah, thank you. I was only suggesting the first-floor balcony, Chair, I don't think anything else would be reasonable or necessary. It was really, I've drafted sort of something while we were talking and I've suggested something like, no lighting to the first-floor balcony area should be installed without first admitting details to the local planning authority for approval. Details shall include type of lighting, the luminance, et cetera, and then there'll be a rider to say that the development should be undertaken in accordance with those approved details. That was sort of the wording of the suggested condition, Chair.
Fantastic.
And while we're talking about that, I'm going to put it to the committee now. That would be a new condition five. So would any member of the committee, rather than go through the whole committee, would any member of the committee object to that as being an extra condition five?
Councillor... Councillor, I don't, don't object to it, but I just didn't hear the word external. Because it would affect the whole of the first floor if you're not careful.
Well, it did talk about the, the balcony, but, so I said, take your point. So we're adding, I've got, I've got in no external lighting on the first-floor balcony without prior approval of the, the details and the type of lighting. So that's not a very tidy condition, but Mrs Pinnock can tidy it up. Is that it, Mrs Pinnock? Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'll add that word in it, so we'll tidy that up, Chair.
Committee, I'm asking you now, does anyone object to that going in as a new condition five? Subject to approval being given? No, so if that is approved, then we will put in that new condition five. And I think, Vice Chairman, we are at the point of moving to the vote, are we, no more?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah. So Dave, over to you. This application has been recommended... This application has been recommended for approval. We have the conditions on page 58. Condition Two has omitted the plans that has to be built to, but they will be added in. And we've just agreed to an extra Condition Five. And then on page 58 and 59 are the informatives. So Dave will take us through the vote of approval of this application. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Councillor Clea?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Laming?
Four.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Raffel?
Four.
And Councillor Rutter?
Four.
So that's all eight members in favour, Chair. Thank you.
And so that application is approved. Thank you very much. And then we then go on to the last application of the morning, which is Item Nine.
Chair, can you just give us one minute to swap offices over, because?
Of course, yes, we were just...
Thank you. I'll let you know when we're ready. Thank you, Chair.
We are moving on to agenda item nine, which is case number twenty slash O one five eight nine slash F U L, which is a proposal to build two dwellings with garages, landscape and access and the demolition of the existing dwelling, the Garden House, Southdown Road, Shorford. The case officer is Cat Watson. Good morning, Cat.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon. And we're ready. I see your slides are on the screen, so when you're ready...
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. The application is for the demolition of an existing dwelling and the construction of two new dwellings situated on Southdown Road in Shorford. And we have got here the existing site plan. So you can see the bottom left hand corner, the dotted line shows the footprint of the existing dwelling to be demolished. And then we've got the outlines of the two new dwellings. Here we have the proposed site plan. So to the left, we've got plot one. To the right, we've got plot two. On the left plot, you can see the access that's already in existence to serve the current dwelling. And on the right, we've got the proposed new access for plot two. Here we can see the existing floor plan and elevations. So to the left, in the left box, we've got the floor plan. The right box, we've got the existing elevations showing a two-storey property with garage and a conservatory. Here we have the proposed floor plans for plot one. So top left hand corner, we've got the ground floor plan. Bottom of the screen, we've got the roof plan, although it says first floor, apologies for that. So this is the third floor, sorry, second floor, excuse me. Above that, we've got the first floor plan, and to the bottom left, we've got the roof plan. And here we can see the proposed elevations. So the main entrance will be on the west elevation, which is the top left hand corner. And then immediately beneath that, we've got the east elevation. And then top right, we've got the south elevation, which is the, we can see that that's a three-storey property. And the bottom right, we've got the north elevation. Here we've got the plot two proposed floor plan. So bottom, sorry, top left, we've got ground floor plan. Sorry, sorry about the interruption. Ground floor plan, top left hand corner, first floor plan, middle, top right there. And the second floor plan is at the bottom with the roof plan on the right hand side. And here we have the elevations. So we've got, top left is the west side elevation, bottom left is the east side elevation. And then we've got south, which is the rear, and north, which is the front elevation. And here we have the garage for plot two. So it's a carport and garage and garden room. For plot one, the existing garage will be retained. And here we have some photographs. So the top left hand corner, we can see the south elevation of the existing property, which is the one that faces Southdown Road. Bottom right, we've got the north or rear elevation. Top left, we've got the front garden showing the boundaries with Southdown Road. So they're the very rear of the photo, that's the Southdown Road boundary. And on the left is the boundary with Southdown House. To the bottom right, we've got the west boundary with Southdown Cottage. And then here we have photos of the access in the top left hand corner, the current access to the site from Southdown Road. You'll see there is a visibility display in place. And the bottom right hand corner, we've got the front boundary to the dwellings, the existing dwelling with, and that's along Southdown Road as well. And top left hand corner, again, the access, which you can see just on the left hand side here. That's approaching from the west. And then the bottom right hand corner, on the right hand side, we can see the access, and that's approaching from the east. And that concludes the presentation. My recommendation is to permit, subject to the conditions contained in the officer's report. And I'm happy to answer any questions now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cat. So we move on to the public speaking. And first of all, we have the Ward Council, one of the Ward Councilors, councillor Ella Nabal. Good morning, councillor Nabal.
Good morning.
And when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. You will have noted probably that although there were enough objections to bring this to committee, there are no objectors speaking today, and that includes Southdown Residents' Association. However, having spoken with them and spoken with the Residents' Association Chair, it was made clear to me that it would be helpful if I would make some general points on their behalf. So that's why I'm speaking today. Obviously, this is not the first demolition and rebuild in the Southdown area. Remember that Southdown, when they talk about Southdown Residence, it's not just Southdown Road, but all the roads leading to and off it. There's been a recent history of infill, backfill, rebuild, always causing heartache for the residents, that's fairly obvious. But always transgressing in some respect as well the Compton and Shorford village design statement. And although these tend to be dismissed in the officer's reports, I think it is something that we need to think about more generally. If we want local areas to not just develop, but then update their village design statements and so on in line with the local plan, then we do have to take them seriously. And so I think that's just a general point. Now, there are some general matters that come up mostly in the conditions. One of the main ones is drainage. The whole area is badly drained, if you like, from a surface water point of view. There is obviously a foul sewer, but the surface water, I'm told, tends to end up eventually down towards Grove Road, towards the south, because there isn't adequate road surface drainage over the whole site. So when the drainage engineer says that surface water drainage should be to soakaways, or should be to soakaways, rather, and permeable surfaces for hard standing where possible, I mean, surely we should be saying must be to soakaways, must be permeable hard standing. I think that's not nearly strong enough. Everything now should have permeable surfaces, especially in an area where there's already a history of problems. There is a construction management plan in the conditions as normal. However, what the local residents are most concerned about is the fact that in all the rebuilds and infills and so on that have been going on, the construction vehicles simply park on the verges, chew them up, and nothing is done later. And I don't think that just a construction management plan and then the informatives are strong enough. It must be the case that when a developer or when a builder, we tell them to park every vehicle on site, we know that doesn't happen. The fact of the matter is there will be large vehicles out in the road. This is a narrow road. It isn't single lane, as the officer said, but it is a narrow road. And parking on the verges will destroy them, and it should be reinstated. And I don't know why we can't make that a condition. Now, going back to the surface water drainage and so on, there is a condition or there is a statement that there should be an assessment done to assess the water infiltration levels and so on, and this must be submitted before construction commences. But if we have to do the other kind of consultations for habitats, for nitrates, for contamination, all sorts of things, if we have to do those before an application is submitted, why is this one after the application? Why is this permission to be granted with a condition that there be a surface water and infiltration assessment to be done? Surely that should be done as part of the requirement to come forward, especially in an area which is a source protection zone for southern water. And that's hardly mentioned, that's not, I don't think it's mentioned at all in the conditions. Southern Water said, this is a source protection zone, therefore there must be a consultation with the Environment Agency, not just the drainage engineer, the Environment Agency, and I don't see that in the conditions. So I would like to propose that such an assessment, if you like, should be a precondition, not an after condition. Because what is going to happen if it comes back and there is some issue to address or mitigate? We don't have a very good record, frankly, of following these matters up. Trees and hedges to be retained, all it says, of course, as usual, is there should be a detailed scheme for landscaping. I think where it is...
Councillor Evans has five minutes.
Okay, where it should be, I think where it should be, they should be, yes, that they should be detailed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Nabal, but there could be questions for you. Just wait a few minutes for people to register if they want to ask you a question.
We have councillor Laming with a question, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Laming.
Thank you, Eleanor, for jogging my memory. Well, that's true. I am worried about the surface water runoff. And one of the strange things that I find on Southdown and Fairfield Road is the fact that whilst they're adopted now, they're not constructed to proper highway standards. So there is no drainage whatsoever on the roads. And I didn't realise that the water ran down to the bottom of Grove Road. So I think that we need to have proper drainage report on this, and I shall ask that a bit later on. So thank you for jogging my memory.
Thank you. Was that a question or?
Yeah, well, it was a question, because obviously you brought that up. And do you consider that to be a material point?
Sorry, you asking? I think councillor Nabal has just said.
I put it forward because that's what the residents tell me is one of their major concerns. And I'm looking to see whether the conditions are strong enough. Obviously, it's the roads, I'm told there isn't good enough drainage, and you've just confirmed that.
Yeah. And I've just read on page eighty-five of our report, the southern water comment, which does talk about the Environment Agency. We'll come to that. Vice Chair, any further questions for councillor Nabal?
No further questions for councillor Nabal, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Nabal, for raising those issues. And if you could just turn your microphone and your video off, thank you very much. Now we have the agent, Gary Bradford. Good morning, or good afternoon, it is now. Good afternoon, Mr Bradford.
Good afternoon, Chair members.
Good afternoon. So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I was going to pick up on quite a few points today, actually, but I think I'll probably just save it until if anybody's got any questions, actually. Just picking up on the drainage point, really. Obviously, we seem to be talking about drainage in the road and things like that. Now, that's obviously still going to be the case if we get permission for an additional dwelling or not. Obviously, the pre-commencement conditions are there to be satisfied. Obviously, before we start works on site, we can't start works on site, actually, until those are satisfied. Obviously, the onsite drainage test, that's to do with the surface water runoff on the roofs and the driveways. We're not actually allowed to take any water from the driveway out onto the highway. So that's not actually going to make the highway any worse. So I got a bit confused there as to how an additional dwelling in there with all of its surface water management dealt with onsite to soakaways is actually going to have any more detrimental impact upon the road. Obviously, the road bits are, but to do with the highways and how they do theirs. Just picking up on a few other bits on the neighbours that mentioned about, and that's obviously the character of the area. There are quite a lot of two-storey dwellings with rooms in the roof. Obviously, Southdown House directly next door is three stories. Laurel Cottage, dead opposite the site, that's three stories as well. Highlands House on the junction of Osborne Road, again, three stories. Abbott's Lodge on the corner of Southdown Road and Fairfield Road, again, that's three stories. The eight new houses constructed in the cross just around the corner, again, all of those two stories with rooms in the roof. I think on density, obviously, it's got to be appreciated that any development to increase the number of dwellings is going to increase the density. It's therefore a judgment as to if this increase of density is likely to cause any harm to the character of the area or neighbouring properties. This proposal retains the properties along the current building line. And the properties are centered in the, sorry, constructed in the center of the plot. There is no detrimental impact to any of the neighbours, not in overlooking or overshading, et cetera. And we feel that the design proposals are synthetically designed, as does your case officer. If anybody's got any questions, I'm quite happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So Vice Chair, are there any questions for Mr?
I have a question, Chair, if that's okay?
How's the Rutter?
Mr Bradford, good morning. No, it's good afternoon now, isn't it? We haven't had our lunch yet. So my question is about the impact of the actual build. And I will be asking the officers if we can put a condition of this. But perhaps I could ask you, as the representative of the developer, to just commit that if there is any damage to verges caused by delivery and construction vehicles, that you will make good that damage at the end of the build. Thank you.
Yes, we will. I was actually talking to the contractor last week on this. Our actual plan is basically to construct the additional entrance first to get us into the site there. We will then use basically the two entrances, so the left, the existing entrance on the left hand side, that will be used for contractor parking, so they will drive into the site and they will park on the driveway and up on the left hand side. And the right hand entrance will be used then for deliveries of materials and machinery and plant. So basically, we're quite confident that everything that we do can be contained with on the site. Quite happy that there's a condition for the construction management plan, again, to highlight on a plan where material storage will be, contractor parking will be, where mixing areas will be, and where material storage will be. So, you know, we're quite happy for that to be included.
Thank you. That's very reassuring. Thank you. There are no further questions indicated, Chair.
Could I just ask you, Mr Bradford, about permeable surfaces? So I think we require permeability now on our sites. And could you confirm that the surfaces on site will be permeable?
Yes, they will. Obviously, there will be a number of areas that won't be fully permeable, but they will be kept to a minimum. I think the plan is to have the driveways as gravel. But in accordance with building regs, we do need a set-down area for disabled and disabled access. But again, that's going to be sort of less than five square metres on that. Even that can drain basically to a soakaway, so it can still be dealt with on site.
Thank you. So I think that's it for you. Vice Chair, any more questions for Mr Bradford?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Bradford, for your contribution. Do stay with us in the meeting. Turn your microphone and your video off. That would be good. Thank you. So Cat, anything you want to pick up from what you've heard in the public speaking?
Thank you, Chair. I think Mr Bradford's covered it quite well. Just to confirm that condition four is for a construction management plan, which does require details of parking and traffic management measures and noise reduction, dust suppression measures. So I'm quite confident that that will cover members' concerns with regards to damage to verges. As Mr Bradford just said, the two accesses will be utilised during the construction period. And the site is quite large, so I can't see any problems parking on the road or anything like that. Also, with regard to the drainage, noting our drainage engineer's consultation response, condition six is for the drainage and it's our standard drainage condition. It's pre commencement as it always is. And under the remit of discharging the condition, we can require full surface and foul water drainage details, which would include soakaways or any other details that the drainage engineer deems necessary. So that covers that. And also, condition seven is hard and soft landscaping works. And that includes hard surfacing materials. So again, there is remit within that to specify, you know, that the surfacing be either permeable or drained to a soakaway so that it doesn't go on to the road, which I know is a concern. But that's all I have to say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, I think that covers a lot of the concerns, except condition four doesn't say anything about verges. Now, this particular site doesn't seem to be a problem because there seems to be enough parking for contractor vehicles on the site. But it does mention restoring damage to verges. I wonder, I'll be guided by Mrs Pinnock, whether we need to add that as a condition in the future, if not now. Mrs Pinnock?
She's just she's just joining to.
Thank you, Chair, for raising that. I was going to ask if we could, because there's no actual commitment on the part of the developer to make good at the end of the build. And I think we should include that in conditions, if that's possible.
The developer said he would.
Mrs Pinnock?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
As a general thing.
The issue is, we can't condition things outside of the application site, Chair. We don't have control over those. We can only control what's within the application site. But what I think the Kemp seeks to do is to make sure we have those arrangements for onsite parking or how that will happen. So as we do limit that impact that kind of on-street and driving on the verge has to local residents, the difficulty we have is we can't enforce that because we're not the highway authority, and it's outside the application site. So what we're doing with the Kemp is seeking to ensure that we do have an enforceable condition that shows those arrangements on site. And it is a tricky one, Chair. You know, I think we always acknowledge during construction, these things are problematic. And I think, you know, what we can
Mrs Pinnock, we've lost your sound. We've lost the sound.
She's being muted.
Chairman, can you still hear?
She's always muted. I don't think, Mrs Pinnock, you're using the system that shows that you're muted. I know you're working under difficult conditions today, but could we put an informative in if we think, obviously, this is not clickable here. If we think there is going to be some sort of damage, I take it that we're not the highway authority, but can we put an informative in? I'm not too sure what's happening with Mrs Pinnock. Here she is.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And one of our, the telly's turned off, and that's obviously the one that the audio is going through. So everyone went on standby, so I apologise for that. We learn something new every time we do this meeting. Yeah, we certainly could add an informative. A cat is just saying something to me now, Chair. Let's hear from Cat. She's much closer to this case.
Thank you, Chair. Informative number six does advise that the site is well organised, clean and tidy. Facilities, stored materials, vehicles and plant are located to minimise disruption. Please consider the impact on your neighbours by informing them for works, minimising air light and noise pollution, and minimising the impact of deliveries, parking and working on public or private roads. Any damage to these areas should be remediated as soon as is practically possible. So I hope that covers.
I think it does. Councillor Rutter, you're the one that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. That covers it. Thank you. Councillor Leaming has a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs Pinnock, and Councillor Leaming.
Yes, I mean, it's always been a bone of contention in this area because the roads are so narrow. And every time construction is done, the verges get dug up quite badly. So anything we can do to control that, it would be welcomed by the residents, as I understand it. But as it was originally advised, I believe the verges are still owned by the people that actually live there, so that we can put an informative in because it's part of the site, I would assume.
Yeah, I think we've decided that informative six will do the job. Could we then, members, start with our reports, which starts on page eighty-six? And could we look at principle of development and design and layout? Any questions on that?
No questions, Chair.
Then we'll move on to impact on the character of the area. Could I ask about the village design statement? Because one of the objectives, contrary to the Compton and Shorthair village design statement, and also the concern from the properties that are near these two houses, that there might be some overlooking because of the three stories. Could I ask questions about those two issues?
Yes, thank you, Chair. With regards to the village design statement, I do reference that. It's on page eighty-seven of the agenda. So it identifies that the area predominantly Southdown as a distinctive sub-area. The dwellings are large two-storey dwellings within large gardens, and there's a verdant character to the boundary treatments and the front boundaries. So that's acknowledged in my report. There are, I know, Mr Bradford mentioned that since 2011, when the village design statement was published, there have been a number of developments in the area, which either are three stories. So there's a three-story house at Carter's Land, which is nearby. And also, there are two-story developments with accommodation in the roof, which is what effectively is what's before you today. So whilst it is three stories, the appearance and the sort of the size and massing of each of the houses is more of a two-story form with accommodation in the roof. So in that respect, it's not, it doesn't run contrary to the sort of the character of the area as defined in the village design statement. We've also got local plan policies which supersede the, don't supersede, but they're more recent than the village design statement, and it accords with DM fifteen, for instance, which is to do with the character of the area. And I'm sorry, Chair, I forgot your second question.
Overlooking.
Overlooking, yes.
From Norwood.
Yes. So, yeah, so as you'll have seen on the photographs on my presentation, the boundaries, all of the boundaries for the site are very sort of verdant boundaries with trees and shrubbery, which provide a really good level of screening. And that includes from the road as well. And Norwood, which is to the north. So you've got the site, and then you've got Southdown House, I think, to the east. And the curage of that house extends behind our site. And then you've got Norwood. So there's quite a distance between our site and Norwood. And plus, with all the, with the boundary treatment with the trees, that's going to be retained. There might be some management of it. Let me just see if I can find the photograph for you. Yeah. So, yeah, forward, get next one. Yes. So if you can see the top left-hand corner, we've got Southdown Road and Southdown House boundaries, which you can see that they're all sort of quite verdant. And then on the bottom right-hand corner, the western boundary with Southdown Cottage. And I think if we can move on, I think that's just, yeah, so those were the photos that showed the sort of the character of the boundary treatment. As I say, they'll be retained. Obviously, there might be some sort of management, but they, you know, the trees, the sort of tall shrubbery will be retained. And so it's not considered that there would be any significant over, well, any real overlooking towards Norwood by the increased height of the properties. And additionally, they are situated on the footprint of the, roughly on the footprint of the existing property. So they're not going to be any closer to the rear boundary. So, yes, in answer to your questions, Chair, I think that it doesn't, it calls broadly with the village design statement. And I don't consider that there would be any significant harm to neighbour amenity, specifically Norwood. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I have driven round the site, and I can confirm that there is quite a lot of screening from trees. And I see from the next report that none of the existing trees will be impacted. So thank you for that. Vice Chair, are there any more questions on the impact of the area?
We have questions from councillor McLean and councillor Leaming, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Okay, just a, I'm surprised councillor Rutter's not picked up on it. But looking at the extra rooms, you've got five bedrooms in one, six in another. You've also got the possibility for other rooms being converted into bedrooms as well. I just wondered if we picked up any comment from the officer on the fact that these actually could end up with more bedrooms by converting, for example, the playroom into a bedroom. Where's the other one? So many different rooms. And the other one's got, where are we? A games room that certainly looks big enough to be a bedroom, and another storeroom at the top. Just any comments, please.
Yeah, that's on the ground floor, isn't it? Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. There's no indication that those rooms would be intended to be converted into bedrooms. I mean, it's not, I don't, I think Mrs Pinnock would say it's not really, we can't really control. You know, we're approving a plan for a five and a six-bedroom dwelling. And that's what will be built. And we can't control if, for instance, they decide on the ground floor to convert the games room into a bedroom. We can't, you know, can't control, once the consent has been built out, we can't control what people do within their own homes, really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is no bathroom on the ground floor, is there? And they are very large houses in this area. This being one of them. Councillor Leaming?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure where this comes, but I'm more, I am concerned about the foul sewage water on Southdown area as a whole. We have seen a large number of houses being built in that area, together with a care home that we did at the last meeting. And we do know that all the sewage runs down the pipes down Otterbourne Road, and we get flooding down there. So we do need to have some guarantee that the sewage system is going to be upgraded at some stage to cope with the major developments that we've had put in in this area. So do something.
Thank you, Chair. The drainage specifically for this site, Mr Bradford's confirmed that with the implementation of soakaways, but also the foul drainage details would have to be submitted to discharge the relevant condition. And our drainage engineer will be aware of the site and any issues. And if the drainage information is not to his satisfaction, then he will come back and request more from the applicant. So I'm quite satisfied that within the remit of this planning application, proper foul drainage will be introduced or extended from what's there at the moment. And also with regards to the surface drainage, that the same will be the case. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, what I'm really concerned with is the cumulative effect that we've had over the last few years, increasing and increasing and increasing. And it's causing major problems further down the line. So we've got to take that into consideration when we're viewing these applications, because there has been a fair number of houses increased on Southdown area. And we've had the flats, the house converted into flats with, I think it's twenty-nine flats. So we do need to take that into consideration.
I think for the purposes of this application, Cat, you're satisfied that the drainage engineer is satisfied?
Yes, Chair.
And that's all we can do. You know, we can't consider what might come in in the future. And whatever will come in will be dealt with at that time. So we are, I think, on the last section on page eighty-eight, landscape and trees, nitrates, highways and parking, or any other issues that we haven't discussed.
No questions, Chair.
Okay.
I beg your pardon, we have councillor Leaming with a question.
Councillor Leaming, and you're just, recent parking, I expect.
Well, funny enough, it's the highways that really concern me because the junction with Southdown Road and Osborn Road is not the nicest one in the world. It is, in my opinion, quite dangerous. And the exit on Grove Road is quite bad as well. And we never ever get the chance to question highways on this. And with the amount of work that's going to be happening on the M3, that's going to exacerbate the problem. So we really need highways to come and tell us what they can do to improve that junction.
Cat, I mean, I have looked on the planning portal, and I presume if, had there been a concern, highways would have raised that as an issue, and it wasn't an issue.
Yeah, with the, thank you, Chair, with a scheme of this nature, we wouldn't, if it's not on a classified road, so it wouldn't be some, we'd use the Hampshire County Council if it's not on a classified road, so it wouldn't be some, we'd use the Hampshire County Council highway standing advice for developments of this type. So the impact on Otterbourne Road, this, we wouldn't really look into that as part of this application. It's more to do with where the accesses are, what the visibility is likely to be. And Hampshire County Council has standing advice on that, which is what we follow for this type of development and therefore it wasn't sort of contrary to the standing advice when I assessed that and discussed with my team leader. So I think that's all I can say on that, Chair.
Yeah, I mean, I'm only looking at it from the point of view of the sightlines on, as you come out of that road, onto the main road, and that's really got to be taken into consideration. We take it into consideration when we're looking at Compton Down. So we should be looking at it on this point of view as well.
Miss Pinnock?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think we've heard from the Highway Authority over a number of years, haven't we, about the sightlines onto this road, onto the main road from these hamlets and they have always been satisfied with those visibility displays. And as Cat said, I mean, I think what we've heard, what I recall hearing in the past is sometimes if there's overhanging shrubbery or stuff that impedes the sightlines, the county council have the powers to cut those back. And from my recollection, Chair, there've been, never been any issues of visibility on these main junctions. And as Cat said, the county council are the statutory highway authority and they require us on these types of schemes to apply their standing advice, which we've done and it complies with that, Chair, and therefore we're satisfied.
Okay, any more questions, Vice Chair?
No, Chair.
Over in debate? Any debate?
No debate, Chair. I beg your pardon, councillor Leaming would like to debate. Thank you.
Councillor Leaming?
I've looked at this development and I feel that it's been done with some sympathy. I think from all the developments I've seen recently in that area, this is probably one of the most sympathetic ones that have been put before us. I think the neighbours are generally quite happy with it and I would like to support the recommendation on this particular case.
Thank you. And my comment is that we have discussed this fully. We've discussed the various issues, especially over water and it seems to be a very well-managed scheme. There are very large houses in this area and in large plots. This will cut down the plot a bit for two houses, but I don't see a reason to refuse it. It's a very nice area to live and I think these two houses will be a nice addition to the area. So I too will be voting to permit this application. If there's no more.
No further debate, Chair.
We will then, this application has been recommended to be permitted. The conditions, eleven conditions, page eighty-nine to ninety-two, and six informatives, ninety-two to ninety-three pages. So I'll pass over to Dave to vote on the recommendation to permit this application. Dave?
Thank you again, Chair. councillor Clear?
Four.
councillor Evans?
Four.
councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
councillor Leaming?
Four.
councillor McLean?
Four.
councillor Reed?
Four.
councillor Refill?
Four.
and councillor Rutter?
Four.
Thank you. That's all eight members in favour, Chair.
Thank you. So that application is approved, permitted and that brings us to the end of our morning session and we will start the afternoon session promptly at two o'clock with item eleven. So, members, if we could be back and ready to start for two o'clock, that would be great.